Okay, we are in the Capitol Board of Representatives and welcome to the call for order of the regular DMUSD Governing Board Trustees Business Meeting, January 22, 2020. By law and board policy, I must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. By law and board policy, any member of the public may address the Board on an item on the agenda or any non-agenda item. But the public must present our written request to the Board. Therefore, I kindly ask you to submit your speaker slips in this time to help us run the vision meeting. Speaker slips for non-agenda items need to be turned in prior to item 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. You will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. You will have three minutes to address the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will need to be turned in by item 5.7, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. You will be recognized and called to the podium when your requested agenda item comes up. You will have three minutes to address the governing board. Tonight, we have the 6:30 PM time certain items, item 10.1, board review acceptance of the annual audit report from 2018 to 2019 fiscal year prepared by Wilkinson Hadley, company certified, held at the Congress. Item 3.2 is welcome report of action taken in closed session. Governing Board in closed session, I would like to report the following action taken in closed session. And again, this vote, the Board voted to approve the compromise agreement and release NAAH number 2019-080702. The agreement includes funds for special education services in exchange for waiver of claims against the district. Item 3.3, we'll now move to the flag subcommittee. Please put us in the flag subcommittee.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always love to hear these voices when we draw a flag. Okay, item 3.4 is order approval of the agenda. Given that we have a number of speakers on one of our agenda items, I'm going to recommend that the Board amend the order of the agenda to address item 9.1, which is a border port facilities update and item 9.2, border port Delmar Heights school rebuild project immediately following the time certain 6:30 PM audit report item. So that is a post amendment and all your amendments to approve, each other by seven minutes.
Yes.
Is that your idea of that? Okay, so those two amendments, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. On paper, high. Okay, and it is good. That takes us to item 4.0, correspondence. Good evening, President Harper, members of the Board. In the evening, the superintendent's office has received the following correspondence. Numerous regarding Delmar Heights facility, school visual facilities, and several parents regarding take two episodes. That concludes the correspondence. Thank you. Item 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. Okay, that brings aside item 5.1, board recognition, DMUSD employees up and up. Let's take congratulations to these DMUSD employees for the month, for the month of January. From Ashley Falls School, Grace Houston, fifth grade teacher, Carmel Delmar, Rod Gibson, school pathologist, Delmar Heights, Rachel Johnson, speech language pathologist, Delmar Hills, Michael Masa, sixth grade teacher, Ocean Air, Stephanie Rocken, STEAM Plus, science teacher, Sage Canyon, Jessica Jackson, third grade teachers, Sycamore Ridge, Ashley Hansen, fifth grade teacher, Tori Hills, Julie Kirksey, fourth grade teacher, from the district office, Audrey Shepherd, she's program assistant to student services, and from our special education preschool, Janine McCullough, special education preschool agent. Please join me in congratulating these candidates. And now for what I think is going to be the fun part. Item 5.2, report Delmar California Teachers Association, David Skinner.
Thank you, President Harper, members of the Board, and Superintendent McClure. Before I introduce this group that I'm sure we're all dying to see, I just wanted to express on behalf of the teachers in Delmar, thanks to the Board members over the last couple of months. You all have made yourselves available to several groups of teachers. They've expressed to me how much they appreciate that, and then you taking the time for that. Another thing that I wanted to especially thank you for is during your side walkthroughs, which sometimes can be stressful for teachers. We appreciate the time that you spent making personal connections with them. Those types of things really mean a lot to us and will go a long way. And now the good part. I will now turn the microphone over to Nathan Cardoso, who will introduce his fantastic group.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. McClure, the Cabinet, and the Board for being here in your time tonight. And parents, we appreciate your time. I need to again. Students, great job. Parents, thank you so much. I know you forget the baseball and soccer and homework, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
See, I'm sure the next one will be just as fun.
But it's a perfect season when we're talking about seasons.
Item 5.3, report of the Delmar School Education Foundation with President Phoebe Garnder. And parents and kids, we'd love for you to stay as long as you want, but if you can't, welcome to the end.
Yes, well, good evening, President Halbridge, Dr. McClure, members of the Board, members of the Cabinet. I'm Phoebe Gardner-Catell, President of DMSEF. And as most of you know, down at the Delmar Schools Education Foundation is a foundation that helps the district to raise funds for our STEAM teachers. And so this was a perfect segue to see all of the, oh, thank you, to see all of the exciting things that are happening in our classrooms with STEAM. What Mr. C is doing and what's happening at the Heights is incredible, and it's so amazing to see all of these students' creations. And that is really the ultimate purpose of DMSEF, is to bring those types of learning experiences to all of our schools. So it was wonderful to see it tonight and really exciting to know that this is happening in every single one of our schools. Thanks to all of the district's support and thanks to all of the community that supports DMSEF. We're very excited to announce that our spring JAGA-thon have officially started. So we have started kind of our biggest fundraising season here for the entire year. And the first one is at Delmar Heights, actually, quickly, definitely. They're doing an incredible job. They kicked off a week ago. And their JAGA-thon will be on February 5th. Soon after, we'll have seven more schools with their JAGA-thon, so it's going to be a busy spring, but really fun. They're great community builders. They're really excited for the kids. I think all of you know they love getting to run. They love having to have that day outside with all of their friends and, you know, have a wonderful time participating in the CamRacing Conference for DMSEF. And just a quick update on how we've done. Financially, we have raised $571,000 so far this year, which is incredible. That means we're at 30% of our $1.8 million goal, which is just fantastic. We have already, we're approximately $58,000 ahead of where we were last year at this time. So also really great news, that is definitely thanks to all of our amazing community support. And I just wanted to remind everyone, just so people kind of know the background of DMSEF. You know, this foundation is a nonprofit. It was started over 20 years ago, so this is its 20th anniversary this year, which is exciting. And it was founded originally to support certain arts, and it's evolved now to support science, technology, art, music, and physical education. And the district funds 60% of our STEAM teachers' salaries, and DMSEF funds the other 40%, or helps to. And that's our goal this year, is to get to that $1.8 million and be able to fully fund every STEAM program at each school. So we can't do it without your support, and we appreciate everybody that does it. You know, you'll be able to check. We have a great website, dmsef.org, to get updates on how your school's doing. And we also have a great new program, new fundraising platform called Blue Sky, that will be used for all of our families and the runners. So that will be really fun. It can be shared on Facebook and Instagram, and there's lots of ways to get involved. So yes, if you can, please help support your schools in the next coming months, and we look forward to a great JAGA-thon season. And don't forget that we'll have our one sale then also in May, so we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
All right, we're working on that. In the meantime, item 5.4 is the report of Parent Teacher Association with President Gregory Reed, from Sycamore Ridge School.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Gregory Reed. I'm the PTA President of the Board. I've been asked to speak on the impact, the positive impact of the Parent Teacher Association with our schools and programs we do for families and for kids. Hopefully, everyone's aware of the fundraising, some of the PTAs provides money for, to supplement the schools' needs for technology, learning spaces, recording equipment, and things like that. But in addition to that, our PTAs use a portion of our raised funds to provide social events, promote communities within the school, and make additional educational opportunities available for the kids. I'm going to highlight a few of those, both at Sycamore and schools throughout the district. Socially, our PTAs are always trying to provide fun social events for our schools. Sycamore, most PTAs have some form of dad club. Under this group, events are held such as movie date, movie nights, daughter date dances, or father-daughter dances, even pancake breakfast. PTAs sponsor these events. Most of them are free to attend. At Sycamore, we start a son plus one game night as an alternative to the annual daughter date dance. The son plus one night is for sons and siblings who come with hopefully their mom or another parent. And we do bingo and other fun, exciting events, and everybody has a great time. Last year was so successful that our U R was overflowing, so hopefully we figure it out for this year, because it's this Friday. Community events, PTA leadership, many of our schools have mentioned there are ways to provide additional interaction between families, especially those that are new to the area or the school. Community themed events help bridge some of the gaps with the families, such as we host back to school events to welcome back new and returning families to the new school year. Sycamore Ridge holds an annual soundstand feed for all of our families. It's a party event, offers a DJ and hula hoop contest, balloon artists, face painting, and school spirit hat decorating contest. Our PTAs also host the back to school breakfast for new and returning parents. This is an important way to introduce the PTA as well as usually the principal, DMSEF, and even STEAM teachers. Other schools hold ice cream socials. It's a delicious way for families to interact in a fun setting. During the school year, many of our PTAs sponsor carnivals, Halloween events, and finally Field Day for parents at the end of the school year. Fun activity for all of them involved. Educationally, many PTAs present an international night, which provides community and educational activities in a social setting. Sycamore holds a Y and a World Festival Day. Parents choose countries to represent, and they plan fun activities so when groups of kids come through, they can learn something about each of these countries. Many of our PTAs welcome the imagination machine to your schools. These perform student-written stories as comedic improv. And last year at our school, the kids found wildly hilarious, silly, crazy stuff, so we're bringing them back, and I know several other schools are as well. Other popular sponsored educational activities are things such as drama clubs, Science Olympiad, and Math Club, which are partially or wholly funded by PTA. Sycamore's drama program was restarted this year. We just had a really successful run of Strike Junior. Our Math Club overflowing with applicants. We have almost too many kids because we need so many volunteers per child, so hopefully we can ramp that up as well. And then the Science Olympiad is new. It's supposed to be educational fun. We've signed up volunteers. We'll find out. In closing, I hope I highlight some of the many popular ways our schools, PTAs are helping the Delmar school districts. PTA Presidents Gregory and we share ideas and information to make all of our schools better as a result.
Thank you. We're moving to item 5.5, which is the Board's course. I will summarize some of the Board's activities. On January 8th, the Board did an invitation at Carmel Delmar School. Carmel Delmar is one of the next school alignment facilities upgrades, so we got some up close views of what is going to be planned for that school, like the indoor upgrades and completing class accommodations. I will say that I always love touring DM because one of my favorite spots is there, which I love the little outdoor spaces between some of the wings, where there are pillows of grass and trees, and you always find kids out there on the other classroom doing work. And you also always find a couple of places where it's in the middle of the three wings, and they're always, they're always outside when they can be doing the work. So I love seeing that almost every time that we're there. This time it was raining, so I could see them outside, but it's great to see. On January 14th, Catherine and I attended the School Board Book Club, which is the book club for San De Hito and all of the theater districts, where we have two Board members attending. We read All Learning is Social and Emotional. And we toured San De Hito Academy. This one was hosted by San De Hito, and looked at their newly expanded culinary arts area and their new building, which is funded by their facilities bond. We noticed they incorporated a number of green features, like they have classroom lighting that dims when it gets brighter outside, or if you raise the shades. They had a drainage system in their outdoor flooring and other things along those lines. So we are actually hosting the next one. And then we're planning a luncheon in June that would involve invitation to all of the school Board members from the six districts, five theater districts, and San De Hito. So we'll share that information as soon as it's planned. On January 7th, I met with David Skinner and Eric Fankie from the Teachers Association. I always appreciate the chance to connect with our teachers and understand more about their experience, rarities. January 15th, I attended the Delmar Heights PTA meeting, where the San De Hito Alliance discussed the risks of vaping. And since we know that vaping often starts in middle school, there was some discussion at that meeting about whether our sixth graders may hear more about the risks of vaping, so that they're fully up to speed before they are ever exposed to it, to the extent that that happens in middle school. So that was a great session. Thank you to the PTA for hosting that. San De Hito is also a great, sorry, San De Hito Alliance is also a great partner of ours, so we always appreciate the work that they do with our schools. I want to congratulate our superintendent staff, the launch of Take Two, which is our new weekly video that replaces in one week. I enjoy learning something new every week of the topics that Dr. McClure is focusing on and even picking up a few tips that I can use. So thank you for continuing to focus on communication and connecting with our parent community. So it also happens that I'm a member of the school site council at Earl Warren, where my daughter goes to school. And I learned through that body that the San De Hito High School District is working on plans to change their school calendar starting 2020-21, so that school starts at least a week earlier in August. So I wanted to note that any changes to the high school district's schedule impacts families in the five theater districts, including Delmar. Many families have kids in both districts for many years, which means if San De Hito makes changes, we will likely consider those changes in Delmar as well. I really appreciate our superintendent and assistant superintendents who coordinate regularly with the other districts in an attempt to better align our calendars. For example, the calendars are different during the February break week, where we take President's week off, and San De Hito takes off only the prior Friday. So we've been talking to them about moving, this is a frustration for a lot of parents who have kids in both districts, so about, we've been talking to them about moving the Friday day off to Tuesday, so that families can have at least four consecutive days together and more time spent together. But starting the school year one or more weeks earlier in August would be a much more significant change. And I know that several parent committees have been discussing this with the San De Hito district. And I just hope that the public has a chance to learn more about it and comment on any major changes with the San De Hito calendar, as that will likely affect our calendar in DMUSD as well, if we have to make changes to align it. So I'm sure this will be a topic, upcoming topic at our Board meeting, as San De Hito is a one in our process, and at that point we can be able to have a board discussion on the topic. So with that, we pass this down. It's very, to G Y, next to me.
I don't have a full lot to report, but I want to say thank you to all of these kids that came out, and that was, that was amazing. I really enjoyed learning about it. I could do that all night. I know maybe other people, we have other things to do, but, you know, that was really enjoyable. It's really great to see what, what the kids are doing at school at the time. I also met with a group of teachers, and I, it was, it was really helpful, meeting with Eric Fankie and some teachers there and give feedback. They're obviously involved with part of this district, and it was great to hear from them, and I'd love to continue that discussion. And that's pretty much for me.
Yes, thank you for enlightening us on Italy and with the Vichy machine and sculptures. This is what I like about the school visitations, because we get to see what's going on in the classrooms and sit down and talk about it. That's what I really like. I attended the foundation meeting. I walked in and was happy to see Holly and Shelley there. And I commend that Board, because they worked very hard and they worked very well together. And I think our STEAM program is in very good hands, leading the way. And that brings me to today, so if you have one of these.
Hi. In addition to those events that Erica mentioned, I got to see a movie this month, Screen Aiders, and it was really, really great. And, you know, I say hold off on iPhones and phones for as long as you can. I've just seen that movie especially. And, oh, the Science Olympiad. I went to, my kids and husband and I went to the event that was at the Canyon Crest Academy High School, and got a little taste of Science Olympiad, and my two older kids watched the parachute event and the something that was a catapulting one or something. It was really, it was, or no, mousetrap, that's what it was. So it was really good to see that. And I'm a supporter of Science Olympiad, starting the younger the better. So I know it takes a lot of manpower and volunteer work, but I think that's going to be a really fun start in kindergarten. It's going to be good.
Yeah, there's Science Olympiad, and there's also Science Field Day, which the schools all partake in. Elian Switner and I put on the sport annual Carmel Valley Science Olympiad back on the 11th of January. And we actually had six teams from Delmar Schools, from two schools, so Sage Canyon was there, and Ocean Air. Each had three teams. And this is, it's an event, it's more of a state level competition, because we have teams coming from Northern California all the way through LA, Orange County, San Diego. So some of the best teams in the area are around there. So there are 51 teams from 18 different schools in the area. And our schools did quite well. I mean, we had Ocean Air had a fourth place in Boomer Lever, a third place in fossils, a fifth place in meteorology, and a third place in water quality. So they're competing against middle school students, because this is a middle school competition. We don't have the Division A in San Diego County, so they all have to compete against the Carmel Valley Middle Schools, the Central Trails Middle Schools. So they do really well, and it does develop the program later on in middle school and high school. So it gets, it gets to have a lot of fun, and we have a fun time running it, but it's enjoyable. If you ever want to go see some of the events, they have in February, they have the regional, or the county competition. So you can go and see these events. The Boomer Lever is one, the mousetrap vehicle was another one, the gliders, the last watch glider, and the parachute. Are the four events that you can watch, so it's a fun event. Thanks.
Thank you. Item 5.6 is the report of the superintendent. And thank you to Board Member Wooden for being the leader in our area with the Science Olympiad. I took a lead to go, and I couldn't go this year, and I know it was fantastic for our kids. And to echo what you were saying, Catherine, about the benefits to our kids, it's true, and how we actually continue to cultivate that in our district is something that we, that we look at. So it is a great experience, and it's great to be able to see it in the classrooms like we did at Carmel Delmar. When we recently visited the school, again, our Board members take the opportunity to visit a school every month. And we were at that school this past month and saw some postings in action in our classrooms, which is great. As Doug said, Shelley and I were guests at the Delmar Schools Education Foundation meeting this past month, and we had a chance to talk about STEAM Plus and some of the conversations that Shelley's been having with teachers in our district, and the exciting work that continues to go on to provide these exceptional experiences with our kids. And I want to commend all of those great meetings and the advisory work, et cetera, that's underway. I think we are always on the road to doing things even better than we're currently doing them, which makes it very exciting. Catherine, you mentioned the speaker series. We put that movie together. We actually have the second one coming up. Screen Aiders, the Next Chapter, uncovering Skills for Stress Resilience on February 10th. It is, I have seen it. It is good. It talks about helping children navigate. It is for adults. I would say that one is for adults and parents. Talks about helping children navigate through the digital world and some of the context that comes along with that, and how to help children in their lives through that. So a different take on the topic that I think is very relevant and will be very good. So we're looking forward to that, and thank you, Jenny, for organizing those parent events. I also wanted to comment on a visit that we had this past week. Actually, we invited a Harvard researcher in Edward Clapp, who is a researcher as well as author. Edward Clapp has work in both private and public schools around the world. He is outstanding. He actually came to our school and spent a couple of days, and I just want to share with you a little bit of what he was able to share with us. It was interesting to hear somebody who has so much relevant experience with research and providing meaningful experiences for children with creativity, innovation, a lot of what we've talked about today. I want to commend all of the children that were here today, because we actually heard from Edward Clapp, who was able to meet with two focus groups of children in our district, as well as two focus groups of teachers, and as well as see some classrooms firsthand, and then sit down and talk to us about what he saw. I will tell you, he was very impressed. And he is working with districts, or excuse me, school systems throughout the world, as I said. And he said, we are definitely, when we talk about our vision and mission in this unrealizing pursuit, and we talk about revolutionizing the school experience for these kids today, and making sure it meets their needs, not the needs of a foregone time, that we are well on the path and down the road and ahead, and we are not out to be the first. We're out to do it really well, and you said we're doing some really, really good things. I will tell you, one of the things that he commented on was our work in mathematics, and how our children are fearless mathematicians, how they are thinkers about math. And one of the reasons, and we know that to be true, is that, you know, and he saw, as he commented on how that thinking, he could see how it was building up through the grades, so he could see how our children are thinking at kindergarten first, all the way up through the upper grades. And, you know, our sustained commitment to our teachers' development, our bright teachers who come in and their growth in that area, has been really phenomenal, and it's great to hear it through the eyes of Edward Clapp, who actually has a lot of experience in a lot of different districts and does not see that other place. So when we think about that, I think it really is our adherence to district design 2022. It's not just words to us. That is our mission, our vision, and every day we play it out, and decisions made here, as well as decisions made throughout our district. And it's exciting to see someone actually come in and be able to say some real word, to provide some real world examples in what he's seen, as well as what he's hearing from our students and our staff. So it was a great two days and definitely well worth the time spent with that researcher and author. And we look forward to the next steps in our district. Thank you. Okay, thank you. It is 6:30, so we are going to go to our time certain item 10.1, board review and acceptance of the annual audit report for the 2018-19 fiscal year prepared by Wilkinson Hadley, the Secretary of Government, required by the Board of Representatives.
My name is Brian Hadley. I'm a partner with the firm of Wilkinson Hadley. Firm has prepared the audit for the year in June 30, 2019. I'd like to give just three highlight items out of the audit and then I can give you additional questions if you have any additional questions. So the first item is, when I look at an audit report, the first thing that I always look at is the accountant's appearance. And you know, in my, in my view, that's the most important page in the audit because that's what your business report is. Looking for the opinion that the accountant gave on the financial statements. And you received an unmodified opinion, which is, you know, which in non-accounting talk basically says that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the district at June 30, 2019. That's the thing that you want. You know, it means that we didn't have to make any reclassifications or adjustments to your financial statement. They presented fairly your financial position at June 30, 2019. You know, there are other different kinds of opinions you can get, but the one that you want is an unmodified opinion. That's what you receive. The second thing that I look at, so the second point I'd like to highlight is, there was one current year finding. And it related to one student who, it related to the unduplicated account. There are, there's some additional funding that is allowed to students who are either low income or English learners. And there's a test that we have to do to test for that. And we found one student who did not qualify for free and reduced funding but was counted. So that was the only finding that we had. And we tested a number of state compliance items and that was the only item that we got. One student that was, that did not qualify for free and reduced funding. And then the third item that I look at, from the last page of that report, there's a listing of prior year findings. And I looked to make sure that those prior year findings were all followed up on and that they were, the changes that were required were fully implemented. So that they're not, you know, so the problems doesn't completely carry over. And again, I'm happy to claim that the one prior year finding was fully implemented and all the changes were made. There's no continuing problem with that. And so, you know, just in summary, those are the three things I do. I want you to realize that you have an unmodified opinion. There was one current year finding and all of the prior year findings were followed up on and there's no carryover problem. And I'd be happy to address any other items out of the audit if you have any specific questions.
Okay, thank you. Another stellar report. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We actually have to do item 5.7, which is hearing of the public. Oh, sorry, we didn't vote on the, yeah, we didn't vote on it. We have to vote to accept the acceptance of the audit report.
I'll move to accept the audit report.
All favor. Okay, we're going to go to item 5.7, which is hearing held regarding agenda items. Because now is when, we want to make sure everyone has their speakers that's turned in. So the governing board, basically, do you have any comments on any of the subsequent agenda items from here? Please be sure your speakers that's turned in with Holly Palmer. Okay, great. Then we will move on to item nine, sorry, 9.1. Board Report for Facilities Update and Prisons.
Thank you, Governing Board President Hopper. I'm the board superintendent. I'm Chris Dallaganti, the executive director of Carmel Programs and Technology. And tonight I'll be giving facilities updates on some facilities projects throughout our district. Tonight we will be talking a little bit about Pacific Con's Ranch School Number Nine. I'll talk some more about community engagement we addressed last month. And I will address a couple of district projects that we have coming up for us. So when we look at Pacific Con's Ranch School Number Nine, we have a couple of things coming up. As we talked about last month, we finished the CECL process with this project. And we talked a little bit about purchase. And I know that 10.2 is a purchase agreement for this project. So our next steps are to purchase this property. We are working with, it will be our architecture in Erickson Hall, moving from our design developments to construction documents. And I'm doing a next round of cost estimating so that we can ensure that we continue to estimate, continue to look at the project and the costs as we move through the process so that we can make informed decisions and report back to the board on that. And we continue to anticipate the start of construction in the fall or winter of 2020. Over this month, we also were, shared some updates on our central cafeteria. We've come to a design plan. And the architects shared a couple of renderings from the exterior showing the manner in which we will be, number one, creating an exterior that aligns with the rest of the exterior of the school. I will say this is focused directly on the cafeteria. Next month, we anticipate we're going to be looking at the whole school, so it pulls back so you're not so focused on the cafeteria. And we can look at the schools as a whole. But we wanted to show you this because there is a focus on making sure that this ties in with the school. However, on the top left, you'll notice that we have some of the cafeteria. As you walk in, we will be doing landscaping and entrance so that it doesn't appear as though that's the entrance to the school. Because this is going to be at the corner near the front. However, as we put this together, make the landscaping done correctly, it will allow the community to walk in. Clearly know that this isn't an entrance to the school, but it is the entrance to the school site. And we'll move us around and be able to enter the campus and we'll be able to show a little bit more on how that looks all across one. And it's not something we have a large amount of. We're excited about how this has come together and how this will be able to serve the district as well. For one few districts, if only a district in county that does not have a central cafeteria. We spoke last month about community engagement planning and scheduling site meetings. So we are in the process of scheduling those. We have our first meetings in early February and we're doing them throughout the course of February, March, besides what we're not going to be able to go out to and meet with, sharing updates and again, sharing the priorities that we've shared with the board at this point. And gathering input based on the needs of those schools. I've also reached out to the school sites and the principals and we will be identifying two members for a facilities roundtable. We will schedule the first meeting in April and we'll have two to three meetings a year. This will be an opportunity because we go to those site meetings again, having individual school site meetings, getting individual input, and then bringing that to the overall, the whole district so we can talk about decisions. Because when we potentially make some changes to priorities, there's ripple effects. So we're going to have those conversations across school sets and then make informed decisions and bring information back to the boards. The board can make those informed decisions. So we're ongoing in that planning and as we start having those meetings, I'd be happy to report back out on those meetings and the information we gathered. And finally, a couple of upcoming district projects. We have gotten, just received a quarter for field repair and upgrade at Delmar Hills Academy and Torrey Hill School. Both schools are in need of upgrades and we are hoping to be able to move forward and do some network this summer 2020. If we are not, we'll have things in the book and have the plans done so that we can do it summer 2021. But between summer 2020 and summer 2021, Delmar Hills Academy and Torrey Hill School, we'll be able to do upgrades to those two school fields, improve student safety, add a DG path, retain the baseball fields, and improve the usability and safety of the schools' sites. If that, I have any questions about our facilities update or facilities across the district.
Question, when you say retain baseball fields at the hills, what do you mean by retain them?
At Delmar Hills, we have a couple of fields that are used regularly by our little league. So we know that they're used, we know that they're used regularly. And so rather than, we want to be able to retain some of that space as there's a use that's being done. So we don't anticipate just getting rid of the baseball fields because you have the space there.
So you're going to reconfigure them so they're more little league? Or you're going to do something on the fields to make them more little league?
We're going to upgrade the fields so the turf is improved. We don't have some of the holes and issues we have. We're looking at some meshing underneath. We do not have the continued cover problems and other issues that we had a number of sites. So we're looking at, and even things like irrigation, other parts, because irrigation gets old. We end up with places where it's a break in the, they're a little bit distinct to it and some of the issues there. And we fix them as we go, but to redo the whole thing before we do the whole thing. So when we do this, we're going to do it right and make sure there's improved safety for our students.
Add to grass, right?
Yes, sir.
I just have one question. It's more of a thought word, like a wish. But if we're going to have a central cafeteria, is there, because I've now seen, more at the high school level, I'm sure, but actually up at NCIS too, is there a way to have some kind of space for students to practice cooking? Just throw that up there.
Okay. Thank you for that, Chris. I know you're not going anywhere for a while. Item 10.2 is board approval of Resolution 202001 of the Governing Board Trustees of the Delmar High School District. Approving an agreement for purchase of property for our school site and escrow instructions between Delmar High School District and Farmy Construction Company.
So we bring this to the board, asking the board to approve this resolution to move into escrow for the purchase of the property for school set number nine, sole terraced at Parkway and across the courts. We have gone through the process of working through the pricing and the appraisal. And if we have any specific questions to the actual purchase, we have any questions with Councilman McAdams as well. And so we'd be happy to ask any questions we have regarding this site purchase and moving in escrow.
In that case, we have a question to my board. Absolutely. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All is clear. Hi. Question, Grace. Thank you.
Quickly say it.
Please.
I just want to say this is really exciting for me. It's been almost two years in the works. So this is kind of how I started getting started with the company for me is trying to get this school built. So it's. Yes, I just want to say that I'm really excited for this whole process to get started. And now we're actually purchasing the land. These are literally two years in the works, maybe, if we were, you know. Not for, there's a lot of, we didn't know that this was going to happen and now it's going to happen. So I'm very excited. Thank you for all the work that you guys put into this.
Chris, can we put on a sign that says, "It's soon to be an elementary school." Can we put in the escrow under it?
We were also discussing, I mean, we do see getting a site rendering and putting something out there. So we are, we are having some discussions about how we should get some signage for a future Delmar school and some renderings so that we can have some signage up there that does show the public and what may not read the board report or receive. It is coming, but it is future Delmar school and not proposed Delmar school. And so, yes, we do have some thoughts and we will be putting something out there as we move through that process.
Or we got community meetings, you need to put a date on the sign that's out there too, like that, people do drive by.
Suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 5.2, read your speakers list of this item. The board bylaws call for 20 minutes to comment on the item, but if it were more degrees, we can expand that. We have probably a little under an hour of comments. So would I be agreeable to taking all these comments? Then a reminder of the process is that we'll have a presentation by staff and the architect. Then the board can ask questions or clarify anything and then we'll have our speakers and then following, board discussion.
Thank you, President Hopper. So excitingly, we will be doing a presentation on our Delmar High School rebuild project. And we will tonight review the process of the Delmar High School rebuild. We'll look at site plan updates, share specific information and speak again to the educational vision. We're also fortunate to have Rich Wiki at Baker Wiki here to review some of those updates and speak with the board. So to review the process, our FMP, our facilities master plan and bond planning started almost two years ago as we were in our facilities master plan development process. This was board approved July 25, 2018. And then that led to the development of Measure N. This was developed based on our facilities master plan and reflects the vision and planning that links into the facilities master plan. Okay, this was board approved in August of 2018 and passed by the community with over 60% in November of 2018. When we look at our facilities master plan, it sets forth the plans for the future Delmar High School, which is for the board. This board adopted document shares the needs of the campus and the fact that both modernization and new construction were evaluated. Finally, there's a recommendation for a complete campus tear down and construction of a new five hundred student campus site that with some detail on what should, that should look like. I'm going to pause some of the detail. So in that phase, it does share a complete campus tear down. It shares what we want to redesign, to redesign the entire site, ask for a new campus layout, the creation of central indoor/outdoor hub, states new innovation center, modern learning studios and a larger NUR. It speaks to indoor/outdoor learning environments throughout, states the need for an enlarged parking lot, the safer drop-off zones for both kindergarten and the main campus. Speaks to enhanced outdoor play areas and again, the board approved this facilities master plan on July 25, 2018. And this led to our community approved bond language. The slide shows the bond language from Measure N. that the community voted on. And I'll pull up just a couple of points from this as well. Three main features that really stand out are the redesign, to redesign and reconstruct the campus. That goes into a little more language, but that's the beginning of that part. To reconfigure and reconstruct, drop off pickup areas for improved traffic flow and student safety. And to repair or upgrade play structures, fields for student safety. The focus of the redesign has been aligned with achieving these goals for the building, the parking, traffic flow, student safety and the upgraded play and fields. And then briefly, I'll speak to the fact that again, we went through a community design process as well, starting in spring 2019 with our five community meetings and two more in the fall of 2019. And through this process, from the facilities master plan to the measure N. to our community design process, we've identified design priorities for our site, reducing vehicle congestion, improving the system of safety, maximizing unsafe vehicle flow, maximizing parking, maintaining greater views and emergency vehicle access. And then we also identified design priorities for the building, campus center connection, flexibility and adaptability, indoor/outdoor collaboration and transparency, natural lighting, fresh air, access to venues, flexible technology and central located multiple spaces. And then finally, there's design priorities for our field, to repair or upgrade the play structures and fields through student safety, through things like repairing and upgrading the field surface, creating to improve that service. For providing media, accessible paths, to provide improved access for students and visitors with disabilities. The improvement in sprinkler system, as I talked about with our other fields that we'll need to do to reduce breakage and the associated holes and unevenness that cause some student safety issues. And then generally with our play structures as well, looking at play structure ground materials that are both accessible and safer for our students. And finally, the board at last month's board meeting provided direction to maintain parking ingress improvements to focus on one-story construction. And with this background and these priorities in mind, we continue to work with our architects on adjustments and updates to our plan that will continue to make improvements to the operational flow of the campus as well as the educational pedagogical functionality. And I'm going to ask Rich Wiki to speak to the updates that Baker Wiki has committed to.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, board members, board president, superintendent staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to review with you the continued design development of Delmar High's elementary school. So the site plan is the plan that you saw last time that we met. And we've continued to work on the design, as you know. When designing a school is an iterative process. We take in information, we produce a design concept, we take in additional information, we make refinements. And continuously throughout, excuse me, the process, through when we submit to the state, it's going to be like that. We'll continue refinements, continue to continue the project. Sometimes people hear we say that it's not finished until the stage. So we have made some continued developments with the school. The new, the site plan is, in its current iteration, is looking like this. And let me take some, a few minutes to review with you some of the developments that have taken place since the last, the last version. So I don't have a laser pointer that can work, so we need letters to help guide through the, through the review. First is item A, which talks about classroom flexibility. So in the previous, in the previous design, we were in sort of three primary groupings of classrooms. And that had some benefits to it. But in review, we've now consolidated that generally into more into two areas and we'll go into more detail in subsequent, subsequent slides. So that has provided. So that has provided some, an increase in flexibility and some other academic benefits that will belong to that. Second is pedestrian connection. You'll find the B down at the bottom end of the site on the south end of the site. So there's a pedestrian connection that is being developed from the cul-de-sac onto the school site. The third is the drop-off area. The drop-off area has been improved. It's moved a little bit north to the site to a more central location in the new classroom building. And we'll review those benefits as well. And the after-school rooms have had a little bit of adjustment, a little bit of refinement in their optimization in terms of their accessibility and location. And then also in the landscape areas, primary areas have been optimized to create more outdoor educational opportunities adjacent to classroom building. So to go a little bit further detail, let's talk for a second about classroom flexibility. In consolidating those classrooms in the way we have, it's created a, I guess what I would say is a tighter plan. And there's a number of benefits. The previous plan had three general collaboration areas. And this plan has now been expanded to four, actually, even though we're down to two clusters. Each cluster, if you will, is grouped around essentially two collaboration areas. What that has done is it has moved more classrooms into, the classrooms into a more contiguous arrangement. So that gives greater flexibility in classroom use and a great level of configurations in how you, how you choose to use the classrooms. So that's more flexibility and greater use on campus. And the enhanced collaboration areas, because they're a little tighter, a little closer, and they're more contiguous with the classrooms, we think that that will improve the use of the collaboration spaces and the accessibility of the teacher's space. The indoor/outdoor connections, we think, are also improved in this requirement. Because whereas before, similar to the collaborations, we had three general areas for outdoor instruction that is adjacent to the classroom. It's not to say that there are other areas in the campus where outdoor instruction can, can happen. But now in this plan, you can see we have some stability there. There are four areas and they're right adjacent to the collaboration areas as, as they were before. Moving to the south end pedestrian access, got a circle around it on the large picture, but there's a, there's a blowout as well. So from the cul-de-sac coming down into the campus, it's important to note that there's a very little change there. There's a stair and ramp that's, that you see on the plan that comes from the cul-de-sac. It provides two opportunities primarily. One is the notion of the walking path along the canyon rim is preserved and enhanced by allowing people that are taking that walk to then exit the campus on that side. So that's a nice benefit. The other is it provides a second access point into the campus that the school can use how they wish. If it's, you know, an inopportune time throughout the day to allow people to use that access, it can be locked and it's gated. But then it also provides opportunity for egress in emergency situation and other times where ingress may be desired. The drop-off pickup area, I think, is greatly improved. If you recall, it was far, it was closer to the cul-de-sac down on the, the southern end of the campus. And while that afforded more car queuing on campus, which is important, what it did was it had that entrance, you know, sort of pretty far away from a lot of the campus. So this moves the drop-off area to the middle of the classroom building. Whereas as you come through the lobby, which is the red ellipse area, you're in a more central location to access the rest of the campus. So we think that's a benefit. We still have a tremendous amount of queuing on site. I'll note the little gray area next to the ellipse in the drive aisle is a, you've probably seen them before. It's, it's a raised area. It's like a, a widened speed bump, if you will. So for that area, it raises up like a speed bump. It's a traffic calming device. It also signals to people that that's the drop-off area. Those are very effective devices for communicating to drivers what the intended behavior is in that, in that area. Another benefit that's come out of this is by moving that, that drop-off a bit to the north, a separate queuing for district student vans is provided on, on the school side of the parking lot so that those students do not have to cross the parking lot to get from the van onto campus. The, I'll note that the, the ellipse area is both an interior circulation area that allows circulation from the parking lot into the campus. But it's also being designed, as we saw on previous slides, to sort of double, if you will, as the expanded collaboration area. So that could be a really exciting opportunity to both have students collaborate and also demonstrate what's happening on campus to visitors in that area. So I do want to talk for a minute about some of the safety features that are in this plan. Not necessarily the plans from the previous, but we are continuing to evolve. The field area itself is re-rated with new grass. And it's, in this plan, it's a little bit lower than the classroom buildings. So that will improve the supervision from, from staff in the building area to see what's happening on all the fields. It's a lines of sight that for, to. All of the facilities and the pedestrian paths of travel throughout the site are ADA accessible as they are required to be. Pedestrians in this scheme have a, a separate path of travel. So by, by not having the parking extend to the west, it allows pedestrians to come into the site off of the field without crossing the parking lot to get onto campus. And that's an important, important safety feature. In addition, playground areas are designed to where it's not just all asphalt. There are alternate playground surfaces, resilient surfaces that are safer for students, increasing safety. They also reduce the heat out of the fact they don't absorb the heat as well as much as harder, harder behaving surfaces like concrete or asphalt, which generally makes it a poorer environment. Notion of connected classrooms. Each of the classrooms, as we've recently been discussing, will connect one to the other so that there are multiple points of exit from a classroom should, should there be an emergency situation, which is easier, easier ways to get out of campus, out of the classroom, excuse me. Requests come in for snake fencing, so basically a very tight mesh of the classrooms requirement on the field. So that will be on, on the whole perimeter of the site and hopefully that'll be effective. Snakes have a way of doing their own thing. Snake fences are very, very effective. Also want to touch on for a second the, the, some of the green features that we're currently considering and initiative instituted in your design. First, it's important to note that along the classroom building, many of the buildings, the pitch roofs are sloped so they face out, so they are, as we say, solar ready. Almost all of those pitch roofs can have panels in the future. There's a, a consideration given to shade trees and their location in the parking lot and around the campus. They also reduce heat out of the effect and create a shady area environment more suitable for outdoor instruction, for example, and, and other activities. Stormwater will be treated on-site. Runoff will not exceed the existing. Those are, those are rules that we have to follow, but they are, they are sustainable features. It maintains level of cleaning water as it leaves the site. So the retention basins of the stormwater will treat the water and before it leaves the site and help to clean that. Site lighting as well. All the site lighting, particularly the higher, the higher poles in the parking lot, have cutoffs so that there is minimal light spilling into the neighborhood. So, and also reducing that glare around most parking, parking lots. Energy efficiency, all through the campus, all the HVAC units, the lighting systems are all energy efficient, LED lighting and so forth. Some of the lighting controls that you mentioned with the other campus will be available for this as well because of the lighting systems that we chose. And bicycle parking is also provided as well. Talk for a second about some of the project data statistics. This is just a brief analysis. It talks about some of the areas. As you can see, the green space overall is a little bit expanded and proposed. Two columns for me to explain. The left is the existing campus, not the previous design we showed, but previous area shown design, but the original campus as it exists today. And the column on the right is, is the proposal, the site plan that we presented today. The overall building area is, is much larger. It's a bigger school. I'm sorry. The overall parking area is expanded greatly as well, from forty-eight to eighty spaces, which should be adequate for the size of the school. And the queuing, which is, which is a big, a big issue on the site, that the community design process, the community meetings of the traffic issues on the field. So there's a queuing now for thirty-eight cars and the three vans, whereas before it was fifteen. The overall building area is, is increased as well. Going to see some of the programmatic concerns that have come through this design or in the master plan. And important to note, the last item, the portable classroom learning desk from twelve thousand square meters here. And then this diagram. This is the current site plan and indication of the green space areas that are provided and the telescore footage for each of those for your information. Back to this presentation. Thank you very much.
Couple more pieces that we'll, we'll share as well. So Rich in sharing the, the updates to the plan we've shared. You will see that there has been some increase in two spaces here, one on the field sub and one in the commentary in the middle as that classroom building was technically been adjusted in business. I also will share some of the next steps. As we move forward, we have a suspended timeline, secret documents being released for public review. We anticipate by mid-February, and then we have a thirty-day review period and secret documents brought to the board trustees for review. We anticipate in March, but March, April, as we're looking at ensuring that we're at the process. Right now, we anticipate mid-February being able to release a thirty-day review and then us being able to respond to comments and be able to bring back to the board trustees. I am going to ask, Rich did an excellent job of speaking to the architectural side of our instructional program that Shelley Peterson has been integral in the process and will be done across the district for years in developing our vision. So ask Shelley to speak a little bit about the educational vision for our new sites.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Well, the development and the, the ideas that helped contribute to the design of the school, we have actually, just began last year. We've actually been learning about researching and figuring out, listening to teachers, listening to students for several years now. And all of that research and those conversations and that information really contributed to what we see as a beautiful design for the rebuilt SMR High School. You've heard Rich speak to the collaboration space. And collaboration spaces can somewhat be seen as a buzzword in what do students really collaborate that much. But we had a beautiful example up here of students engaged in projects who need space. And so when we have these beautiful hallways that connect classroom to classroom, provide teachers and students the opportunity to work together and spill out of the classroom into programmed educational spaces. It benefits both the students and the teachers. The, the way the building is designed gives teachers a direct line of sight to students working outside our classroom. And as Erica mentioned, when the board visited CDM, they have space outside. But what you'll often see is children sitting on concrete or sitting on tables or propped up against a fence, making the outdoor space work. What we have intentionally designed with the Delmar Heights build are spaces that allow for both interior programming that is outside, directly outside the classroom, but also programming directly outside those interior spaces that allow for students to work outside in a space that's comfortable and functional for learning. And then the enhanced outdoor play area. When we see students engage in outdoor play, they're very engaged in the activities on the blacktop. They're very engaged in the activities within a play structure that is, that is exciting and innovative, which is what we've designed for this school, as well as all of the other learning and play opportunities that really function as both throughout the design of this campus. We see students where, you know, out on a field or in a play stack isn't every student's cup of tea. But what we have here are outdoor spaces that are functional for students to be able to engage in activities that are exciting and comforting, comfortable for them according to their personalities and desires. So given all of that, it really ties directly to what we see as part of Lieber III environment and our vision for education.
In conclusion, some have said that the district is not listening. But I am telling you, this district is listening. We have spent over the last eight months much, much time listening to our community, listening to our teachers, listening to everybody who should be involved, listening to our students to develop a plan and to continue updating a plan, as you've heard tonight. And it is our responsibility to, to design a school and to build a school that meets the needs of our children, the educational needs of our children, and serves those children. And this design is directly reflective of our district's vision and mission and commitment to our children. And I'm excited about it. And I'm telling you that I only wish every child in every school in our district could attend a school facility that is this facility. It's outstanding. I appreciate all, and I speak on behalf of our entire staff and the board, all of the communication that we've gotten from folks to get to the point that we've gone to tonight and this update on this plan that you see before you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot of work has been done over the past month. The next portion is any questions and clarifications from the board, and then we'll do a follow-up comment.
Rich, what was the increase in field space between last month and this month?
Approximately sixteen thousand square feet. Approximately sixteen thousand square feet. We're at seven, six thousand and change. This Michael says ninety-two thousand and change.
Could, could you just clarify a little bit how you were able to move the bottom building? Or the, I think it was just fifth and sixth grades and then you moved up to a fourth through sixth. So you swung it around and I think you've opened up more field space there. Can you address how that came about or how you did that?
So as, if you just take a look at this plan and you look at the classroom building, not the sixth grade area, but the, the other buildings, and you just see the amount of space that's white. And so if you look along the parking lot, there's a, there's a line of four trees. There's a, some green area there that's along the, the drop-off area. So we look to, to sort of re-purpose that space and consolidate the buildings into that. If you look at the other one, there's, there's a density there that I think is, is kind of obvious in that building where you can see where we've just literally rearranged the classrooms around the collaboration spaces so that more, more of the classrooms are in this contiguous line. And it allowed us, one, to have a regular break, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, which is, which is fairly common. And also, again, we've created a more vibrant environment by getting everyone involved in that singular, in that singular bill. And that's your questions.
Yeah, the other question I had, you, on the, what you have existing and proposed in here. So it looks like you added green space, added parking, added buildings. What did you take out? I mean, because right now, my proposed is higher than what you said is existing.
Basically, we utilized areas that in that, in that plan don't show up on those square footage counts. Like, like what I was pointing to where those four trees are, right? That's, you would call that open space. That's not playground. So when we're, when we're adding up the playground area, even though that's a green space back there, we wouldn't have counted that.
But existing is what it is today, when you're saying existing or if you're. When you're saying existing, or if you're...
Existing was your... I'm sorry.
Can I, I think what you're saying was existing, existing is current day.
Right.
Proposed is this iteration of the plan. If we looked at this slide from last month, existing would look exactly the same, but proposed would look a little bit different.
Right, I'm just saying, what did you take out from what the school looks like today? Because all proposed are increased square footage over the existing. That's my question. Because you were adding green space, so one hundred twenty-six, one hundred twenty-seven. Your parking goes from twenty-three to fifty-one, and your buildings are from fifty-four to sixty-six. So where is it, I mean, you have a ton of space.
Right, and I understand the question. But if you add up all of these square footages on either side, it doesn't add up to the whole square footage of the site. Because we've pulled out portions of this for analysis. And so there are other areas of square footage that don't come into this. And so we're more efficient in the site use.
So what was that used before? That's my guess.
Well, so sidewalks, there's some, there's a janky little fire lane that goes around the east side. Some of these sort of wasted spaces on campus that we saw in there have now been more efficiently used. Really, that's the answer I need. It's a more efficient plan in terms of land use than how it was before. Sort of, if you will, if you have... Like, we're talking about the density of the classrooms in that area. The previous plan had multiple buildings to add up to those classrooms. So the space between the classrooms, that piece of sidewalk, that's not in these calculations. So some of that area between the buildings, sidewalk, etc., some of those areas, like I said, it's a more efficient plan when the classrooms are closer together. The spaces between...
So it's hard space area between the buildings existing because of the way the pods are shaped?
Yes.
So...
Yes.
So what's the total square footage of the entire property then? Like, what's your...
It's got, you know, how many acres?
It's around four hundred thousand square feet.
About eight point four usable acres.
Yeah, so eight point four times forty-three thousand, if I count the six, I think it's square foot. I don't know the exact...
When you made the change from December to today, you condensed the classrooms. And I never want to overlook the fact, this is a school. So these classrooms, have we made them smaller? Are we affecting the useful space? When we condensed them, how did the...
Well, it's a hard to explain. We did not condense the school, the classrooms, we condensed the land area that they occupy. So the classroom is the same size, but like I said, it's a more efficient land use.
Okay, we don't have wasted space in between, I think, with multiple buildings, to add up the same number of teaching stations. Okay, so...
I would add that we've looked at it closely with Zaker Licky, and we've actually spoken with a couple of teachers and the principal, and looking at the key being, when we look at our instructional vision, do we still have classrooms that have direct adjacency to collaboration space and direct adjacency and visibility to outdoor learning? And in this case, we still do. And that was the key that we had to continue with, because that is the vision that we have all expressed, we've heard the board express being strong in support of having that. And one item that Rich spoke to is the fact that we've gone from three outdoor areas to we now have four. And we've been able to angle some things and put things in areas where you have two smaller outdoor areas, but it allowed us to get things into a more, yes, condensed in just the general space that they're on, but still aligning the classrooms in such a way that we didn't compromise that instructional vision. Because that was key, that we did not compromise our instructional vision.
I think that's the question I have is, do you have the square footage from the site plan from December of the collaboration spaces or outdoor learning spaces versus what you're proposing now? A comparison of the square footage of the outdoor learning that's directly adjacent to school classrooms and buildings? And then, like, when you're talking about that section of four trees, could a classroom have another doorway on the back and you use that little bit of space?
Could have, it's not in the current plan.
But in the other plan?
That is a possibility, that is a possibility to be done. I wasn't in all of the conversations on my campus, but it's a little bit of a security issue because if a student wants to exit that way unsupervised, you know, if they happen to get away...
I think it's what's...
Then they have a parking lot. Yes, but it could be, it could be used.
Yeah.
Yes, that's true. And your first question on square footage, I don't have that information, we can get that information, we can get it.
Yeah, I mean, because I was just looking at the plan from December, and I see a lot of green space adjacent to buildings, and I think that's usable space. It's not necessarily field space, but it's definitely usable space for learning, I would say.
Can I just speak, so one thing that we noted was that at the time when we were working on this plan, we weren't using, on this iteration, we were not using that eastern for instructional uses. That was an area where, as Zaker Licky kind of looked at, where are areas that we could tweak or tighten? Using that to tighten it up to get some of the adjustments was... So I, yes, with this iteration, you could potentially use some in the first, second area. There really wasn't a lot of it for the third, fourth, so there were some discrepancies.
Or even behind the five, six, there's a lot of green space right there.
How pretty consolidated. Have you been able to get some deep feedback from teachers who are actually teaching in there? Have you talked about all the outlooks and are you able to...
Yes, so we, this has been a work that we've been working on over just the last month, but I was able to go to Delmar Heights last week and speak with a couple of teachers, looking to reach out to some teachers that have been involved in the design process throughout, and have, so we had some good conversations, some very positive feedback on this iteration in looking at, we still addressed that instructional program, but we give up any evidence. And so I have very positive feedback from the teachers who are attending.
Any other questions? Then we'll take follow-up comments. The first person is Ian Phillips, followed by Catherine Stone.
All right, thanks, everybody. I'm Ian Phillips, and I'm sure at Delmar Heights, I'm a teacher. Mr. C. alluded to this. One of the best things about working at the Heights is that I don't go to work and say, "Oh yeah, I'm going to see my coworkers there." I say, "I'm going to see my Heights family." And I don't use that word lightly. It's not like, "Oh, yes," I mean, a lot of times, you might have found, no, there truly are a network of people that supports each other. And when you have a good family like that, you're allowed to speak freely. And you're allowed to speak all the way up to the office and all the way into the custodial room, and your voice is heard. And that environment existed with my old boss, Wendy, for a long time. And it still exists with Mr. Swallow now, and I'm very grateful for that. So, oh, sure. So in that environment, we've been able to voice our concerns and our needs. And that's also translated to the district level. If you know me, you know that if I don't think that level of communication because the district doesn't allow us to say that. But from the very beginning, that process has been open and honest and reasonable. The parameters defining the project financially, architecturally, educationally have been on the table the entire time. And we've been able to say how we feel, and other members of the community as well. Community is a big word. It includes people who work at the school and people who don't. People who have kids at the school and people who don't. And all of people's opinions matter, and those people's opinions have been heard. We went through a long, detailed process in figuring out what we needed for this school, what the teachers need to teach, and what the students need to learn. And that is the function of a school, those two items together. So other uses of the school are great, they're a bonus. They're a bonus, and I'm glad that our school is an open place, that people can go and use it when we're not there teaching. I use it for my son. But community is a big word. It's not just people who live on one street real close, people who live far away, people who drive from miles and miles like me, because we want to be there. So I just want to say that there's been no feeling from any of the teachers that, "Here's option A, and here's option B, and this is what you get, deal with it." It's been the opposite experience of that from the beginning. And I've told the DRO members and work members the same. So there's been adjustments. I'm glad to see that people who wanted the field a little bigger have had their voice heard. Okay, it makes me happy too. However, a lot of adjustment has been made. And I'm glad that the architects were able to do so in a manner that still preserves the educational needs that we have at the school. So that's really inspiring to me. But as Mr. Rappner was asking, what are we squeezing? What's been lost? And I think, not even architects, we're kind of right there. All the things that we worked together to say, "This is what's deficient in our school. This is what we need in our school. This is what our students need to make this worthy of all this investment." We're there. Please respect each other if you don't share the same opinion as someone else or all part of the state community.
Catherine Stone, followed by Joel Holiday.
Good evening, my name's Catherine Holiday Stone. I'm a Heights parent. I'm really pleased to see those improvements to the field space, using the space more efficiently, assuming that all of that is accurate. I still have deep concerns over the rebuild plan. The process by which this plan was developed, some may feel was fine, many of us feel was deeply flawed. And this is why parents and the larger community were so shocked and upset when this plan was first shared with us in September. The current plan constructs an unneeded road that runs the entire eastern length of the school. This is a very large road. It has lanes for cars to move in both directions. It has a drop-off lane, and it has perpendicular parking. Creating all of these lanes has taken a huge amount of space away from the field and blacktop. Eliminating this road would free up a tremendous amount of space that can be returned to the field and blacktop, making this a much more well-thought-through school plan and helping bring our community behind this plan. Alternatives exist that allow for the removal of this road. Some of you, I think all of the board is seeing what Ralph Silbert has sent out. It would provide ample parking and drop-off and pickup space. The district should be directed by the board to explore and present these alternatives in a good faith way. No more misleading numbers, no more attempts to hide the ball. Further, the current plan does not utilize the large northwest portion of the property for school purposes. This is unacceptable, as the proposed field size has come down to such a small size that baseball can no longer be played on the Heights field. And the first through sixth grade children will share one basketball court. How in the world is that going to work? First through sixth grader sharing one basketball court? I asked this of my son, and he said, looked at me like I was crazy, and he said, "It isn't." I think he's right, I know he's right. To think this is sufficient for our kids and we have the space to do better is absurd. Please, I respectfully ask you to jump in here in a more active and strong role and direct the district to work with us to make substantial, good-faith improvements to this plan. I come to you with the purest intentions. My youngest will be gone from the school before any of these changes happen. I am not involved with this for my interests or for my child to get to have a sparkling new school at all costs. I am fighting to build a better school for the children of Delmar today and in the future. Please step up and right this ship. Thank you.
Joel Holiday, followed by Nicole Penner-Davis.
I'm Joel Holiday. I'm a forty-seven-year resident of the community and have kids and grandkids now who go through the Heights and the district. And I really come before you and say, I haven't been involved with all the details of this, but I do have a pretty good sense of the community and how the community's feeling about this. And so I come here in a positive spirit of some feedback from, as the previous speaker eloquently said, the community is a large, a lot of people involved in the community. And my observation is that the community, the trust that the community has had in the, in the school district, it's been, it's an integral part of the overall community. And we feel that way, whether we have kids in the school or not. And that trust has been eroded by the process that I feel has really gone off the tracks, it appears to me. I mean, I listen to the improvements that have been made and so on, and I, not in a detailed way, try to go in and critique that. But the process has left the community feeling that it's been opaque. There's been false information that's been put out. There have been changing explanations of, Joel, what's the size of the field, what isn't it? There's been stone walling. And there's been the dismissal of a bunch of really energized, creative, sincere parents who have been advocating for quite some time now a, changes that undo the proposed drastic reduction of the play area. And furthermore, this staff driven process has created a dilemma that puts the board in a tough spot. It's either forge ahead with a very flawed plan to meet the timetable, or let the timetable slip. And so, you know, here we are, we should be celebrating this fantastic school, and all the money that's being spent for that. Instead, we're embroiled in a very divisive kind of situation. So my suggestion is that, you know, now is the time, it's not easy to do, because boards aren't meant to be getting into the nitty-gritty and micromanaging projects. But I have a feeling that this is the time that the board needs to step forward and really try to put this back on the track that brings the community together. So, thanks for that.
Nicole Penner-Davis, followed by you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Penner-Davis. I have been actively involved in this discussion now for five months, since the beginning of September. And so I have been here, I have been voicing my concerns for five months, which is a long time. There was only two months in the spring where I wasn't actively involved with this. And I do thank you for the changes, well, I thank you for making an effort to provide more field space. I do really appreciate that. I personally wouldn't have taken it away so much from the classrooms. I think that, you know, I would have taken it from the queue and from that corner, in the northwest corner. I think that Catherine is absolutely right. That northwest corner should be back in our school. And for the most part, I've said everything that I really want to say with this. I really do want to come and ask you to please give Ralph's design really sincere consideration. It takes everything that you want so badly in the school, that we all want so badly in the school, and everything, or most of the things that we want as well. And it really kind of provides it all. So I just ask that you really give Ralph's designs consideration. And that's it, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
She's been followed by John Reynolds.
Hi, I'm John Reynolds. Thank you to board and district for allowing me to speak. I've been actively involved in this exhaustive and extensive rebuild project for the first hundred years. From the start, educators expressed their true needs of our students. They know firsthand what is a need compared to want as they are involved in the day to day of how our school functions and how our kids learn. Clearly, they are the very best resources for what is needed when designing the new facility. They can specifically speak to the needs of our children. It feels to me that their voices have been lost along the way due to a small group that is trying to get their wants met. This is simply not fair to our kids. During the design meetings, we spent time collaborating with staff to visualize spaces that students need, spaces that our current, our current campus is sorely lacking. From these meetings, we had initial, had an initial plan that was designed based off of what is needed during their day. Many compromises and refinements have been made since then. Ceiling heights have been lowered, classroom sizes have shrunk, buildings have been moved, more students will be crammed into smaller spaces. Referencing District Design 2022, Level Three, the environment as we've all heard about. The physical environment of a school influences how individuals interact, their behaviors and their performances. We know the district values collaborative spaces, both indoors and outdoors, to engage students, flexible spaces and schedules, and space that promotes collaboration, creativity and productivity. Mr. Swallow has shared with many of us that the district is engaging with Ron Richard on how current research and architects, educators and designers value indoor outdoor spaces, green buildings, community connections, maker spaces and so on. I only hope that we are not going against extensive research to try to appease a small minority. Del Mar Heights students spend roughly five hours a day in classrooms that don't eat twenty one cent, the twenty first century learning. We have two condemned portals that are unusable and another nine disgusting portals currently in use. These spaces are inadequate and no longer meet the needs of our students or District Design 2022. We have no collaboration, collaboration space for students to interact over academic studies. Teachers have no space to work with students one on one. Upper grade students try to concentrate while balancing books and computers. Steam plus in special ed classrooms are extremely limited in space. Special ed classes have no restroom or adequate space, but we have trailers for our special ed students. Our library and art studio currently have little to no natural light and lunch on the blue benches is simply not functional. Our school is simply inadequate. Thankfully, we were able to start from scratch and build a perfect school. And we need to keep in mind that making those needed adjustments to create relevant space for change and bringing the entire school up to code will simply take more square footage. Someone mentioned in some quote in the paper at the last meeting that the field is what makes the school special or magical. This kind of struck me as a bizarre and disconnected statement only because what makes Del Mar Heights magical has nothing to do with the grass. The magic comes from our students, our teachers and staff, our school's culture, the community of kindness we all work to foster, and the strong morals and values we instill within our children. It has nothing to do with the school or the size of it. So in closing, I ask that you can value this work and input that our community has engaged in for the two years. Teachers have given countless hours of input and at the very end, Del Mar Heights is a school and this is a school rebuild and we can't lose sight of that word, a place of learning. We need to make sure that we are designing a school for our students' needs. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Reynolds and my wife Nikki and I recently moved into the neighborhood. She can't be here tonight because she's active duty military serving in the Navy. And so I wanted to start on behalf of our family by expressing our thanks to all of our new neighbors who made us feel so welcome here. We were drawn here by the excellent teachers and staff of the school and we were very excited to enroll our two small children in Del Mar Heights elementary school. Our one big worry when we bought our house is that the school, which was built sixty years ago, is dilapidated and outdated. But we decided to put down roots here, knowing that a school bond had passed by a wide margin and that a substantial fraction of the funding would be used to create a modern learning environment for the children in our neighborhood. Since we moved in, we've become aware of the very professional and very well orchestrated play outside Del Mar campaign, which is strongly opposed to the district's plan to rebuild our school. Nikki and I do understand the appeal of the field, but we want a wonderful learning environment for the children in our neighborhood. And we're very worried that whether intended or not, this effort to oppose the renovation may have the effect of stopping it altogether. Indeed, one neighbor told us they have successfully stopped previous renovation efforts and they plan to stop this one as well. I attended the prior board meeting and I was dismayed to hear talk about how lawsuits have successfully stopped other school renovation efforts in the area. This has just happened to the Cardiff School where a group called Save the Park and Build the School successfully sued to stop the renovation. The parallels are very close to ours. The school is sixty years old and a school bond measure passed by a wide margin to renovate it. And as in our case, the park in question is not a park, it's a playfield, the playfield of the school. After the school was demolished, the lawsuit took effect, stopping the renovation. Now kindergarteners and first graders are being bused to another school while the school renovation grounds upheaval builds. Another thing, similar thing is happening in Encinitas and it's tearing the neighborhood apart. I think we would all be deeply saddened if that happened here. A fifty five million dollar renovation is something that homeowners should welcome. A beautiful new, modern school will surely improve the neighborhood and make it much more appealing to families with children and that will increase our property values. But far more important, halting the renovation would be a tragedy for our children. We deserve an outstanding school. They are our future and many of them are help. Thank you very much.
Followed by Avery Nance.
Good evening, I am Becky Duller. I know a lot of my students in the district, they're successful students that graduated through Del Mar Hills, went to college at Cal Berkeley three times. I echo Catherine Stone that I am here with the purest intentions. I don't live in the Del Mar Heights community. It doesn't affect our view, it doesn't affect the education of my students. I don't use the field. However, in robust conversations with my children, what has been happening, they have a lot to say. And I consider myself a very involved community member and I took offense to being called in the minority because I'm very involved in the community and I didn't know about this. I voted to support the remotest school site and I let it be. And to my wild surprise, in September, when I first heard about the full reduction. And the reason that surprised me so terribly was because this was a renovation. We need to do whatever we need to do to make it better in a vibrant learning environment. But to change the, kind of the school so dramatically was shocking. And again, I'm pretty involved, I consider myself knowledgeable about what's going on in the community. And so this is my fourth board meeting, which I'm not happy to be here. I, it saddens me to see the things that are said, you know, in this community. It's shocking to me. I've been through terrible things with Del Mar Hills, the attempt to close Del Mar Hills, painful. Again, I don't want to be here in this fight again, but I have to voice that this doesn't feel right. I appreciate continuing to iterate and go back to the drawing board to get it right. We want to get it right. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. My kids are calling us boomers, that we're ruining it for them. My kids won't be using this school again, that this generation looks at our generation as we are so short sighted and selfish. And that's what they said, so selfish. And if they could be here and speak, they would, they're disgusted. And it was a robust conversation with my son, who's home with all of his university friends. They just couldn't believe this was happening. And the last thing I'll say is, while at Del Mar Hills, we had a tragic accident, that little friend, queue corner was no longer allowed to be utilized, that was fine. The parking lot was turned into a stockroom parking lot, that's fine. We parked on the street, that's fine. We have the queue. A group of us wanted to turn that little queue area into a top lot. We were told no by the district, that it wasn't safe, we couldn't do that. So I find it ironic that that prime piece of space on this school campus is now being turned into a top lot that is being not safe at Del Mar Hills, but now when it's working for this design, it's suddenly okay. So I understand. So I just ask you, please keep sharpening your pencils. Let's do this right.
Followed by Ralph Silver.
I'm just gonna make a few statements because I get very nervous when I talk to people. And of course, I only have three minutes anyway. So many meetings, so little change.
Will you state your name, please?
I mean, so little concern for the neighborhood. They talk about the heights of the building, that it'll lose, some of them are gonna be twenty six feet tall. That's not a concern for the neighborhood. When you build all these buildings along, all the way down the campus, you're gonna have to put a fence up there all along it. That's not very concerned for the neighborhood, the neighborhood who has children. It concerns me that you keep saying, you keep coming back, that there's very little change. We don't want the classrooms made smaller. As I told you before when I've been here, I was a teacher, I was a high school teacher, a junior high school teacher, a preschool teacher. So I know what it's like, but I strongly believe in having children play outdoors and have it be a part of their learning experience, not just in the classroom. And since they're in school for so many hours, those hours should be split a little bit better. Learning should include a physical activity. Security of the buildings is important, they're kind of spread out. I don't think it's secure since we have to worry about that kind of thing all day. I just feel, I've had, my children are all grown, those are sixty years old now. So, and, and they were, two of them are boys and they needed the physical activity of not just walking around at campus. And since so many hours they're in school, you have to consider the learning experience to be outdoors also. And I know that a lot of the teachers here are saying they need the better classrooms. Well, I agree. And maybe the big problem is that driveway that takes up so much of the, of the campus. Thank you.
Followed by Julie Sun.
Hi, my name's Ralph Silver and I'm here tonight to kind of address what, what we're all hearing tonight. So you have a community that feels very trapped and stuck and that creates a lot of anxiety and a lot of passion, please on both sides. And it really comes from, in my opinion, the lack of a solution that benefits everybody. So what I've, what I've done is spent quite a bit of time over the last month and put together a proposal that I think should be used as a starting point to work with the architects and the community in a more collaborative fashion. And before I show the design, I think the big point I want to make is that I did find a solution. I'm not saying it's the solution, but it really, I think, addressed kind of all the things that I'm hearing tonight. So I want people to feel like we're not stuck, there are options, so let's, let's really work together as a community. So the basis for the design is looking at, this is the December design from the architect. So what you see is a duplication of infrastructure. So this is, this is Mira Montana right here. It's a long street with a turnaround and then you see a similar one built on the Heights campus. And so if you really look at the times, the traffic, you're looking at, you know, twenty to thirty minutes in the morning and twenty to thirty minutes in the afternoon. So to build this massive duplication of infrastructure for forty minutes to an hour a day, a hundred eighty school days a year, is really taking away from, from what everybody's mentioned. You know, the school space, field space, laptop space, innovation areas, collaboration areas. So the design that I have shared with the board and I'll make it public so if anybody's interested, they can look at it. But what I've done is I've preserved a hundred percent of the architect's design from December. And what I've done is I've removed that duplication of infrastructure, slid everything up in the corner, slid this down. I've actually increased this boardwalk area. And this was, and a lot of these, this design came out of a lot of collaboration and working with local fire department. Actually walked the, the property of the Lancer there to get input. But what we're, but the main thing is, is we are now suggesting this can be the staff parking lot. This can be a queuing area or not. But the main queuing area now is down Mira Montana and uses that turnaround here. So this will be the new drop off for the pedestrian entrance here. And then we put parking, diagonal parking of about fifty spots along Mira Montana right here. And the, the school boundary actually extends all the way to about ten meters of Mira Montana street. So this is all owned by the school, this is all school property. So we have, you know, leaning to what we can do here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will be public, so if anybody's interested, come talk to me and I can post that.
Julie Sun followed by Regina Hart.
Hi, my name is Julie Sun. I'm a parent at the Heights community. And I'm a, Ralph, I just, this is fantastic. We have a vigorous debate and steam process. We're a steam school for walking the walk. And we can do better. And we're so steamed that one of our community generated another plan. That took a little bit of time. So let's pause and look at that. And I encourage everybody that's here, we have eight thousand members in our community. If those eight thousand members had been properly informed, and I'll get into that in a minute, from our community engagement process in April of 2019, your community engagement process from April of 2019 through June first, if the protocols, the countywide protocols followed by San Diego Unified and Solana Unified had been followed, you would have had this involvement. And Chris's design priorities, the green field would have been at the top. We can do both. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. This is what great design is. Okay? There've been analogies, the snowball rolling down the hill, the train going on another track. San Diego Unified and Solana Unified have protocols to get the community involved. Number one, in a half mile to two mile radius, you send out mailers. That didn't happen. If it had happened, these community members that are so passionate about saving our field and having a great school, more of us would have been there. We did not have signs posted like the planning board had for the, the light. Large signs in Del Mar Heights and Mercado. We did not have the Del Mar Times notified. We did not have a design committee. San Diego Unified and Solana Unified select stakeholders of whom the neighbors and the community are a part, involved in a committee. More than that, and I want everybody here to understand this, this is not a normal process. This has been way out of whack. What we're doing right here is healthy. It's not sort of like, oh, it's more than, no, this is the essence of a good design process. The fifteen month process that would be from the engagement to the breaking ground in June, in June, which you have scheduled, is not the process from San Diego Unified to Solana. That is a twenty four month to thirty six month. Solana Unified is three years in. So I want everybody here to understand what a healthy, vigorous design debate looks like because by golly, we're a steam school. Thank you.
Good evening, committee towards Solana, Ralph Martin, thank you for being able to speak. I just want to say that I'm not the only one that feels like this process has been rushed. And, you know, how many people in this room at the district board has done this before? Has built a new school more or less to that one time. I've asked a lot of questions at the board and the district and I've gotten very few responses. It's not been really specific and basically disrespectful. So I feel like because I've kind of asked so many questions, I've had to research the stuff that I have and kind of find out that, you know, we really are trying to crush this and we should be trying to build a best school. And I've got, thank you for your engagement, but, you know, I appreciate some of the tweaks and changes that have happened. But, you know, I appreciate some of the tweaks and changes that have happened here, but it's not enough. That, that picture that we were shown tonight, that all the classrooms on the east side, now they have no outdoor exposure. So isn't that what you wanted, been more outdoor? In researching this, I looked at the brainstorming meetings from the other seven schools. And a lot of your teachers are telling you issues with their current schools, we're implementing a building duplicating this one. So it gets, it gets really loud when you have all these open spaces. It's really loud when you have high ceilings. And a lot of your other schools are asking for help with the acoustics, okay? And, and I agree with everyone's fight about this long queue and why are we duplicating that? And I live in Mira Montana, and I welcome people parking there and having a path to walk down to the school. That's a problem of the site is don't have access. And we've been told, I'll tell you tonight, that you couldn't have access there. And then that, that little chunk of property in the northwest corner, we have such scarce amount of property here. You cannot count that seventeen thousand square feet as rain space. I'm sorry, you've already told us it's outside of the, the bounds of the school. So our students can't use it during the school day. But, you know, it could be a staff parking lot that has a gate in front of it that locks. So if everyone that comes in early, it's their park, then we lock the gate, okay? And now it's not a safety concern anymore. But it still allows our kids to walk to school there, and it still saves some space. And, you know, that's a lot of square foot that we're going to give that. Who would pay for this? Measure and then does not pay for a public park. That's not a good use of our taxpayer dollars for education. We're all about the kids, we're all about the safety. But I'm not going to have crunching it into these smaller classrooms with hallways. And so now the kids that are on the east side don't have light because they've got a hallway and there's another classroom on the other side. So I'm not happy with this state plan. I'm happy that we're looking at it and probably consolidating and not wasting space, but it's not a good solution for us. I think we need to go back to normal.
Hi, my name is Jesse Rand here. I've been a resident of Delmar for twenty years. Board and community. First of all, I would like to congratulate the board for fulfilling their duty to shepherd the well-being and education of our children. Thanks for remembering that this is not the marks of merit. Thank you for embracing the opportunity to improve the aging Delmar Heights elementary campus. Thanks for creating an open process for all stakeholders to provide input to the process. I specifically want to thank you for showing leadership and willing, willing to move beyond the noise from a vocal minority who may not have participated in the process and may not have the education of our children as their top priority. Thanks for not allowing the process to get delayed by people who only say no. Our primary goal is to sideline the project and maybe never happen. Please don't let another year of delay cost the district millions of dollars. I look forward to working through the challenges of a split campus, and I look forward to my children not being in a red hotel portable in fall or 2021. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adi Yan. I'm a parent of my kids. I have two kids. I grew up city, I grew up in a city in the Chanoan, Eze. My elementary school had two computer buildings, each three stories high with a laptop in the middle. We had no wind, but as a kid, I spent almost all my free time outside. We went monkey bars, we ran bikes in the neighborhood, and we were playing jumbos. It was different time and place, of course, but what I learned is that playing outside is a state of mind. If we as parents model for our kids, if we insist, it will happen regardless of the size of the field. Our kids play outside right now. They will, they will play outside once new school is built. Building a safe school, a school that is conducive to modern learning to prepare our kids for years to come, outweighs the size of the field. The kids need a functional M U R. They need indoor-outdoor learning environment and a proper place for lunch, basic needs. Teachers need storage space. We need parking for all of our hardworking teachers. We need fire lanes for emergency vehicles, another basic need. Green is always good, particularly because I grew up with none. I want a lot for my kids, I do. But there are other things that are more essential, more important to our task here, which is to build a new school. Amazing things happen on the field and equally amazing things, and may I say more amazing things, happen inside the classrooms. As a community, we need to come together now. I believe we can and we must because the cost of potential delay is huge. Fiscally, we simply cannot afford to wait and end up paying millions more for construction, not to mention the millions we'll need to spend for repairs and maintenance for another year. Also, the risk of not having access for emergency vehicles, the vulnerability of the school to potential intruders, particularly around the kindergarten area. The cost of those happening could be immeasurable. So let's build a school now and let's keep playing outside in Delmar. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelly Higgit, resident of Delmar Heights, Montana. Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you so much for these absolute meaningful changes. I have attended all of the meetings, and this is the first meaningful change that we have actually seen. We appreciate the commitment to make that difference. We're headed in the right direction. This is school, the leadership council of higher and lower self on the latest hot topic. Up until today, this process has seemingly led to the lower self of the nation. I appreciate the shift, but this started with what seemed to be a four-point process, and we quickly learned we were in the middle of a steamroller, being told from the architect that the district doesn't need to be accurate. That clearly, that message is clear as well. I ask you to find a way to integrate both the updates tonight that are absolutely meaningful. I'm really hoping that one of those fields has a baseball. I can't tell, I'm hoping there's a baseball game. The aspects of both walls design and the design that you presented tonight. And please find a way to use the northwest corner and get that back to our children's school. We ask that we add it back, and in good faith, we ask that the district come to a meaningful community. We ask that the district create a meaningful community meeting where we can all come together and discuss those aspects that are presented. We can do better. You just need to take the time. Thank you.
That's the call by Pat Riley.
Hi, Wes Higgit. I, unfortunately, I missed some of this. I had to run it from my daughter from the accident, drop her at home. But I, I did get, I did see the, kind of the site plan. I agree with Kelly, and we didn't coordinate this. That's the most meaningful change we've seen since the nine sixty. Before that, nothing, the September sixty, nothing changed. So I agree, we're kind of going in the right direction. And there, there's a solution out here. You know, Raul came up with a solution. Last week, I came up, we talked to our neighbors about doing this two-story option at the northeast corner, which frees up a lot of field. That we had an architect that's very familiar with the site and very familiar with the neighborhood. So there's solutions out there. We just need to have a board in a, in a district that'll listen to what people have to say. Because right now, it's hot fighting. All I will say, this is the most meaningful change, and we're headed in the right direction. Now as far as process, I went through this, as you guys know, last, last meeting, last month, where I talked about similar schools, Solana Vista Elementary. From the passage of the bond to the start of construction was forty-three months. Earl Warren, right, the start of, the passage of the bond to the start of construction, thirty-four months. Cardiff Elementary, the start of, the passage of the bond, start of construction, thirty months. And everybody knows Cardiff is shut down right now because it was bad planning process. So where is Delmar Heights? We're trying to do this in eighteen months, at half. So even if we were to say, take another eleven months, maybe have a community meeting so we can more people onboard, get the most optimal solution for the next fifty-plus years, let's just say it takes eleven months. That is still shorter than the shortest one, which is under. So everybody says, well, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna delay, it's gonna cost escalation costs. Well, the problem is, that's part of the process, right? You don't go from first grade to fourth grade. You go to first grade, you go to second grade, you go to third grade, and then you go out to fourth grade. So that, that's the point, is we're trying, it wouldn't have been cheaper if we'd done it five months ago. Or how about twenty twelve, measure C C when we had, when that bond didn't pass? So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, the, the, the cost of the escalation cost is a little bit irrelevant because we're trying to speed the process up. So I, I just think there's a solution here. That we can get the school crowd, the traffic crowd, the view crowd, and the field crowd onboard. So everybody's excited about the school. And then my other concern is, is if we don't do this right, long term, we're gonna have problems ever past the line again, because people remember this. And so if we need to come back in five years, ten years, fifteen years, and we need to raise money for our facilities, people are gonna have a bad case in their mouth, and we're gonna have problems doing it. So I mean, we just need to do what we can, more people onboard. Thank you.
Hey there. I'm the kind of person that never shows up for this kind of thing, but I thought I should over this. I grew up in Delmar. Oh, Connor Donnelly, sorry. I went to the Delmar School District, so I went to the Delmar Hills, went to Earl Warren, went to Todd Ryan. I've got four kids in the district now. And, you know, I, I definitely nod, you know, a small minority, probably the silent majority. Everybody that I've talked to in the community that doesn't know about this is, is on our side. We're preserving the fields. And it is important that that includes baseball fields. You know, the, the fields as they are now really are a landmark of Delmar. You know, the, the, the plan that's currently being proposed is really unpopular. Nobody supports it that I talked to, just normal people, people that grew up here, people that, you know, my kids go to school with. And, you know, when, when M M was passed and being supported, and I supported it, and I support building the school, nobody thought that meant bulldozing the fields. Everybody thought that meant rebuilding the school. And so there's, there's, that understanding, you know, was not there, that this is what that meant. So we need an alternative plan, like really smart people like Raul has proposed. You know, people can get behind that. I've got, I'm behind him. And, you know, I think it'd be a big mistake to go through with the plan as currently proposed. Once those fields are gone, we're never gonna get them back. You know, this is about retaining, you know, the authenticity and soul of the community. And that's really hard to do with so many, you know, kind of transplants. There's a lot of people moving in here that don't have roots here. People that do have roots here are attached to these fields, and rightfully so. And I think those people's opinions need to be respected, and I'm one of those people. So I just ask that you, you know, stay patient. You know, this isn't some sort of, you know, blockade to oppose any rebuilding of the school. I'd like this to happen as quickly as possible, to be honest, but it needs to be the right plan. So that's why I'm here, and, and that's why I support you. Thanks.
Hi, we appreciate you speaking this evening. My name is Neela Aria. My family lived in this community in nineteen seventy-four. I'm a graduate of Delmar Hills Elementary School. And I have a two-year-old who I hope to involve Delmar Hills or Delmar Heights in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I attended all but one of the design meetings at the Heights, and I've attended these school board meetings as well. I want to thank this whole district for running an open and collaborative process to, to develop the new design of the school. I'm sorry that other residents were not as involved, and I'm frankly confused by some of the comments about the process. That being said, I want to thank the numerous community members who have spent numerous hours raising the profile of the need to preserve as much open green space as possible, without which we would not be here today with an increased field size. I appreciate all of the work that has gone into continuing to tweak the design, provide additional options for review. I have seen, as, seeing the development of this process over time, I've just seen improvements in time. This evening, I've heard about some of the new tweaks by the architect. And I, earlier this afternoon, I reviewed the proposal by Raul Silver as well. I'm very grateful for that proposal to the extent to which the local fire department approves of being able to use Mira Montana as a fire lane. I think that would solve a lot of challenges. And I would be really, I would be very excited to learn if that was acceptable to them. I have no idea what's feasible or not, but I hope we do stay on track with that overall vision for the school. I'm very concerned about people, when they're talking about preserving the, the existing footprint or various other components. I really believe in this design that has these indoor-outdoor collaborative spaces. That is what I want for my child, that is what the nation wants for their children. And I fully endorse that new vision. That means that we can continue to sharpen our pencils, as you guys have been doing. And so I just wanted to commend everybody, both the community residents who continually showed up here time after time to raise their issues, as well as every, all of the staff and the school board members for taking as much time as possible to get this right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our follow comments. So now we've all, we're over to our discussion, or, and/or clarify questions.
Sorry, Amy. I flipped your card over, but go ahead.
Hi, my name's Tonya. I live in the area, and my kids come to college. I think part of the reaction that the community's had to this plan is it simply is not what anyone expected when it came out. And to get back to the expectations, you have to look at what Delmar Heights have been offered. So if you go back to the original design, for about four hundred kids, there is not enough laptop space. It was well-designed. Over the years, that was all taken away with cordless. The kids at the Heights lost most of their places. Back when we had the school closure wars, I went to the Carmon Valley Schools and counted handball courts. And I can't remember numbers now, but it's a place to say all the Carmon Valley Schools have an abundance of handball courts. Delmar Heights had two, and apparently there were more, but they were cordless. So when we passed M M with the promise that hills would remain open, that Carmon Valley would have adequate schools, that the Heights could be redesigned as it was intended to be, the thought was, thank God, forget the laptop space back. Turns out, it's cut in half from its already depleted balance. The kids, for a hundred and eighty-five million dollars, our kids have asked to give up more. And anyone who's had kids go through there and fight over the handball courts and the angst, the drama from inadequate facilities, there's gotta be a better way. There's obviously seventeen thousand square feet being used as a public park. Come on. And getting back to the original design of that school, it was absolutely the necked design to be a school where people drove their kids to school. People walk, or they were lost. The truth is, nothing changes in the fact it's an isolated site accessed by a little road. For the district to build it to encourage five hundred kids to be driven up there and stranded is, it's irresponsible, it's dangerous, it is unacceptable. There has to be a safer, better way for the kids to have the facilities that we to have the facilities that we all thought we were going to have with MM. And I'll tell you, come on. There's gotta be balance between the hills and heights. To pretend that we're going to overcrowd the hill, the Heights and the hills is not fair to the rest of us. We have to be responsible here and really think about the future of our kids. Thank you.
How about, for Chris, people talk about the northwest corner and incorporating that in the school activities in terms of increasing space. Have you had addressed some of those things, constantly? Have you kind of elaborated on what your thoughts are?
We had that conversation about ways that we could have some multiple use to it. I heard from the community about, would you lock campus when our students come through, because of being in a space? So there, it wouldn't be fenced around that space. It may be open on the first thing in the morning. We have a lot of present, our parents who, of their elderly, the parents who talked about the design process that they stay after they started. But we also had conversations with you. Many of our schools have had a butterfly garden, had other pieces where you could actually include with Vincent a safe way for us to have staff to go over and use that space for learning and programming. So we were looking at that being an activity where we could have some other opportunities for, and use, especially academically, for, for learning for students.
Are any of you guys gonna address the ceiling heights and kind of what the, what stuff has to go into those, into the ceilings? Because it's not just heights, and I think it's not all classroom heights. There's infrastructure in there. Have you guys had any suggestions?
First off, the tall building is the MUR, actually, buildings are not that high. The AUR, in general, the taller space, the rooms are just, it's not down. Ceiling height is down, a larger room. Just get very difficult, very hard to hear. There's a lot of reverberation. So typically, most of the MURs in the U.S. have seen a higher ceiling height and score that, score that here.
Look, I went to the first plan in the U.S., and I was feeling the fact that some people may not have been there. I know we ranked in, in certain orders what was important to those that attended. And if you tell me the top three, if this were, if you were Paul, Chris, or, or Polly, or whoever, I remember, you know, frankly, we're wrong, but they were ranked in a certain order of design.
Some of the top feedback we got at the beginning was the ingress, egress, student safety, and it was as strong as I keep it one story when we were starting that process.
When you say ingress, egress, what are you talking about?
So parking, drop-off pickup, the ability to be on-site, prop students off, take some of the traffic off the surface streets to improve the whole traffic flow and the ability to get on a campus easy.
And then, a question that I had, well, I appreciate the work that you've done, and I see what it could accomplish. I don't know, you mentioned something about the fire department giving some approvals. It seems to me that there's a sixty-foot drop between Nirmontana and, and the school. So Rich, have, have, has... Tell me about the fire rules about around the school and, and what we need in terms of safety back there.
Well, we have, our firm has had many with fire department that have attended. You know, John Baker's been under a fire. But in general, I have not looked at the panel or the general design. But I would say that in general, we have to provide a way for emergency vehicles to, to fire around the backside of those classrooms. My experience, I've gotten a different interpretation from fire this time, but the, it's a twenty-foot drop between Nirmontana down to the ridge, would not allow Nirmontana to be a fire lane. That's my experience. I am not a fire department. If you would talk to your local fire department people about that, that's a good question. The, the issue of ingress and egress in terms of fire access, I think, is important. One of the main things that we heard in, in the new plan news was the congestion that goes on Wakita and out to Maroto and other streets. What's that like in the morning? And there, there have been instances of that where emergency vehicles have had a hard time getting into campus. And it was neat because of the traffic issues created by the, the situation that exists currently at Delmar Heights. One of the primary things I've heard was that that needed to be addressed. And the queuing that happens out in the community was a real problem for the people that don't live here. And they get in and out in the morning and further emergency vehicle access to their homes. So that was one of the main concerns that was, of course. And, and I understand it, because it had issues. So that's why I'm here.
Another question, not necessarily to you, but Chris, or me, with regard to the blacktop. As I saw, it's a rendering, right? So in terms of what we could place on that blacktop, it depends how it's striped. And that really doesn't require architectural input more than trying to fit these things on that space. But as it's drawn, as I saw it, there's four basketball hoops. Is that what I saw?
Yeah, six. We had two full, two full courts for full-size and then two smaller hoops facing each other, where you could either have the smaller kids do full court or some of our sites, we sell a lot of knockout or things like that. So there's kind of some options. So we've, we've looked at space and sort of laid out options based on what we see currently and some of the information we've gotten from the school site and then from the community looking at basketball being important. And we show a couple of handball courts and four handball courts on there. And so we've, we've striped, and you're exactly right, Doug. This is a site plan, a rendering. So we have some flexibility to make some adjustments to it, but we wanted to show space and ensure that we are able to get some of those items that are currently on campus on there.
And, and the same is true for the field. You have a rendering of two full-size baseball fields. But if you can configure it in a way that fits more things, you can do that as well.
Right, and we're showing two backstops. And it's more to a T-ball size, but they're facing. So you do have some space where you, it's not the ninety-foot base paths and a full three-hundred-foot fence, but it, it has, we definitely have the ability to put a couple of backstops and do things similarly to what we do at Ashley Falls and a number of other sites, where we do see our younger kids playing baseball on the, on the field.
So it's certainly usable for Little League?
Yeah, for our, especially for our younger kids.
For the younger Little League, yeah. Well, my son kind of aged out, and he ended up in the Pony League. And that was the big, huge field that's there now that... But the Little League, in terms of the younger kids, that will still be able to play as...
Still an option. Right now, we see, when I look at our facility use, we actually don't see a lot of Little League there. Much of that is at Delmar Hills. And this, the Delmar Heights field is used much more for older students, or older, older kids. But only when we just look at the facility use rentals that we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
So just a question about the classroom space, because some speakers said something I wasn't sure was correct. So there was a, some people had the impression that the classroom space was reduced or that the building square footage was substantially reduced. Can you explain how the space compares to the December version of this plan?
The classroom, as Rich said, the classroom sizes have not gotten smaller. There's been some consolidation of where classrooms are. A few meetings ago, we shared where we had reduced a little bit the square footage because of the collaboration space and looking at a common vision for what we're doing beside the Collins Ranch, what we're also designing with a slightly smaller than nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet that you typically see because we were looking for flexibility and we were looking for the ability to use that collaboration space. This is not totally uncommon. You see it in, in other schools where you have collaboration space because it's also part of that learning space. And we're fighting more learning space than that nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet per classroom when you look at the overall square footage.
Okay, then outside of the classrooms, when you think about the whole built area of the, of the plan, it seems like there are more dual-purpose spaces and, you know, collaboration spaces have been moved around. So, but overall, we haven't reduced substantially. Still the same.
If you look at the square footage from last month that we shared on the, the last iteration of the plan, we shared sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety square feet. On this iteration, it was sixty-six thousand and change. So the, the actual square footage of the built environment has changed down a little bit, but not substantially.
So we managed to reconfigure the space in a way that preserves all the educational space that we had and increase the field size by sixteen thousand.
That's correct. And as Rich spoke, kind of, we, we did take some of that space from the back. I will say, just, I want to point out that there will be windows. There are, there's light from the outside that will be coming in. It's built, so we have higher window lights that, that will be coming in. So natural light will come in to all of those classrooms. That is an important piece that, that we, we see, we know is important. And so there was some consolidation. So as you can see, when Rich kind of went back and forth between the last iteration and this iteration of the plan, there is a little bit of expanding in that north end of the, the area. But it takes away some of the more wasted green space that we had next to our, our drop-off pickup area. So really, it was tightening up certain areas. But we, we spent time talking with Shelley Peterson, Instruction Services, reaching out to teachers, and ensuring that that instructional vision was not in any way lessened.
And do all the classrooms still have the direct line of sight to the classroom and outdoor space?
They do.
Okay, um, thank you. So I just want to thank architects and staff for all of your work to be responsive to the Lord's desire, well, we'll come back, yeah, to, to, to tighten up the plan and, you know, try to maximize uses of the space while also making sure we're controlling costs and just being as efficient as possible and having as much green space as we can have. So thank you for all of your efforts in that regard. And we're gonna continue to discuss. But I also wanted to say that we did receive Rolf Silver's plan today, which we immediately shared with the architect and asked them to review it. So that, all of that just came in today. So we'll ask the architects to take a look at that and give us some feedback. So when we get done.
Yeah, I'm just going back to the bits of green space that are on the backside of these classrooms that I see. I'm thinking, even if we have windows with this new revised plan, what are the windows looking out to? It looks like a parking lot right now, or a road. And so I just know that it's nice to look out a window and see something green. And so that would be really nice to keep that if we're going to shift the green space around to, back to the field.
So I have one point I'll make in that, which is something that I don't figure. Appreciate it. Part of the focus is also sharing the way that lines of sight to the outdoor learning. So there will be visibility out through the collaboration areas. They're going to have the ability to see out that way, let's see up the back. If you go up the back, yes, there will be some parking and other, there'll be the hills, there'll be some green to that. So there is a combination. On that side, the windows may be a little bit higher because that's a passing area, some parking. But we will have definitely lines of sight outside and natural lighting. I, I know the architects, if you have any...
Yeah. And I just, I have to say that I think that it's as important... We all have things that we're desiring for this plan. And I think, as I move along in this process, I just can't say enough how amazing it is to have space connected to classrooms that is like a patio or like an outdoor space that you can have your students go right outside and work. That's just amazing. And that's all I have to say.
I just want to, I agree with Catherine the last point. That's my concern, my, my main concern when I saw this, and what it is now, is, is are we sacrificing educational quality? Because that's my main priority, is to make sure that we have, we're building an educational, or building that's fully for educational purposes and is satisfied with needs of the teachers and satisfied with the students. And, and kind of like what Chris revealed, I don't know if we're starting to get it aligned, or we're getting too close that we're gonna start sacrificing. I'm concerned about that. I don't, I, no, I'm concerned, like, kind of saying things Catherine's saying, like, looking at it, there were some things that, maybe previously, I don't know, maybe the, the space of, the outdoor space was very nice to it, but now it's kind of going to be more of a... We're getting kind of got pushed together. But, no, so yeah, that's my general feeling about this. And I, I hope, and I'm glad that you guys were able to go talk to teachers and, and get feedback on it, that it seems, sounds like they're supportive of it. So that's, that's a, that's definitely a bonus for me. Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, you know, I was supportive of the plan already, like, two months ago, you know? So, you know, I had thought about all the priorities that we were looking forward to for, like, having a wonderful building, taking care of the, the congestion and then the ingress, egress issues. And also, obviously, the safe, student safety is on the main case. And so, you know, I've been perfectly comfortable with how it was. And, and we're, my concern, like I was saying, is that we're going, hopefully, we don't go so far. But, but, you know, I, I appreciate the tweaks. And that's, that's fairly my impression.
Can I just make one comment to the exterior? So I think, I just want to share that throughout as we've been planning and discussing the vision at this site, based on the layout, the way that we move forward has been that the exterior connection would be, you have the interior, the classroom, you have a learning collaboration space, and you have an outdoor learning. So we've sort of talked about that progression sort of from the beginning, last spring, when we looked at some of the modern learning studio visuals. And these are some of the visuals that they've given us. They were really kind of like bubble diagrams. We've sort of looked at your classroom, common learning area, outdoor learning. And so throughout the vision's really been more along that continuum. So I completely hear where you're, where you're coming from, Catherine. But there hadn't been a, an access point to those exterior spaces. That's not to say that you couldn't be something explored. I think we would have trouble providing access on that backside to all classrooms. So you might end up with a little bit of parity issues. But it, just, just to, as we've moved through this, kind of been the vision that we've discussed up to this point. So I, I definitely hear where you're coming from. And, but that was sort of the way, so I'm sure that each class did have that ability to connect with both the common areas and the outdoor areas, and then have some flexibility so maybe more than one class is interconnecting in those spaces.
I mean, to that point, I think this is where it's helpful to keep feedback from teachers. You know, and now that we've kind of got to this point and we're kind of doing more detailing of exactly how those spaces all work, I certainly would love for the teachers to be taking a close look at it and just making sure that, I mean, we know that the teachers have been very supportive of this plan. And, but still, you know, we want to get it all right. So I personally would value continued feedback from teachers and the opportunity for them to look at the details of the plan and just, you know, confirm that everything works right. And for sure, there are going to be suggestions and tweaks. And it seems to me that we're still in the process where we can incorporate feedback like that. Is that correct?
Yes. And there's always the ability to make tweaks and changes. Grand tweaks, obviously, need a little bit further. It will take a little longer to, we definitely have optus to source, push, and work details in classroom.
Sorry, another small question we came up with. Somebody said that they thought that this plan includes a fence along the top of Nirmontana. Is that correct?
No, we don't have any extended fencing because we, in this case, we didn't look including that large retaining wall. So that was not a part of this iteration of the plan. So there wouldn't be any added fencing to the top of... plan, so there wouldn't be any added fencing to the top of Mary Montana. Time to break your shifts.
Okay, I think you'll be concerned with the whole kind of weigh-in on just where your thoughts are, where the plan stands now. I mean, I'll make some comments, I think that the the version of the plan that we saw in December had some opportunities within the building space for improvement. For example, the entryway from the drop-off point was only for use as an entryway, and once the dropping off was done, that space would be used. Now you have a situation where that space is also a collaboration space because it's moved, it's relocated, it's a third grade classroom, so it's a dual purpose space, so you, you know, very creatively optimized space. There was, you know, a pot of collaboration space that looked like it was going to be low utilization, so I really appreciate the creativity, I know that the after-school program classes are a little smaller where those kids are outside more, so, you know, this is just a process of trying to dial in, how can we get it as kind of tight as we can while also providing the best educational program that we can and controlling costs, and it has been, I think, the priority for the board. So those are some of my observations that I can share, and I want to pass it down to get feedback from the rest of the board overall as far as this this rounded adjustments with the plan.
Well, I I appreciate the fact that the architect sharpened his pencil, and I just have a feeling that that pencil's getting a little small at this point. Somebody said that having a robust discussion is healthy, and I think that we have and are continuing to have those robust discussions, and having had those robust discussions has made the plan better, so I think that, uh, from that perspective, this process does work. Um, you know, I I'd be interested to hear about the fire lane, I'd be interested, but but I think this design, if I had kids going to this school, I think my kids would absolutely be in heaven walking through that door, not to mention the teachers, I'm getting some, I think they would love to teach your kids at this school. And I don't ever want to lose sight of the kids because, as I've said before, if you keep your sights on the kids, you can't go wrong. I I I know people have said that that they believe the process has been rushed, but having been involved in trying to get these schools built since the last time we've had a bond, I don't feel that this this concept has been rushed, that the process is, no process is perfect, granted, in any community, you could try, but try as we might, I think we've we've done pretty well to get to the point that we're at now, and I just want to say I appreciate the architect working over time to to come up with this iteration. And as you said, Rich, it's not over until it's done, or was that Yogi Berra? I don't know, he said it's not over until it's over. In any event, thank you.
Just a question, how are we, how are we redoing our time in terms of, you know, the whole process as as you have laid out?
Especially in the next steps, we have, right now, we anticipate being able to bring a Sequo documents to our public in, hopefully, mid-February, mid-February, we're supposed to then have a separate thirty days to advocate your view of that input, and we review that input and bring it back to the board, so it's potentially bring it back by the end of March. We still do need to go through the DSA process, DSA will take a couple months, you can start doing some demo before you're done with DSA, because that's the building work, that we would want to be starting the demo in June, and we want to be doing some big packages with us being at least DSA, because that means that we have close to done documents that we can get out of the work. So, you know, we can't rush the sequel process, but we are, at this point, as far as breaking ground and demo in June, we're kind of ready out the window.
How does it, how does this compare to, like, other processes that, that are familiar with other other districts and how they're processing on it? Is it?
Every district does it a little bit differently. I know that, I mean, I look at some of our districts in the county, and other districts that have very small communities, and they do a whole lot of design work kind of on their own internally, and they just kind of move forward with some ability. You have other districts that go through the process where they put together a design team, and I know that, uh, Salt Lake Beach has done things like a design team, you have community members, you have staff members, you have some other teachers, but that's that team, and they're the only ones who are part of that design team, so that's a little bit different. When we started this process, the board spoke about the desire to have an inclusive process, and so when we started, we looked at the idea of us imposing a lot, everybody to to be a part, so we we looked at a little bit of thinking in that, let's provide a process where people can come and engage in a part of it, and go through the process, and come in and leave as you as you see fit. So we looked at more along the lines of how do we provide the opportunity for as many of them engaged as as possible and and get the input from the overall community.
I guess I would just, if we could continue to explore the northwest quarter as another outdoor learning space, I would be tempted to put that.
So I really appreciate the process you guys have gone through, I think you've gone through a lot of iterations, and as Doug said, I think you've come to a better design along the way, you've made a lot of tweaks and a lot of improvements, so I like the direction that you guys have gone. I know some of those teachers have been very critical in the past, have said they like what we've done to it, and they said it was, it's been an improvement, as I saw today, and said it was an improvement over past designs, so that's good to hear, good to see. It looks like it's kind of, you know, a compromise where people are, you know, getting what they're wanting, but it's never going to, not everybody's going to be satisfied, a hundred percent satisfied, we know that, through a process, so I like where we're going, and I like the direction we're going, and it looks like you've got to get it, you know, there are minor tweaks now, and I think we'll move forward with those. And I expected the Sequo earlier, or this month, but it looks like it's, because you keep making tweaks, you have, keep having to do more Sequo stuff, so hopefully, hopefully that will be out fairly soon, so you can stay on on the timeline when we get the comments from the public, and move forward February and March, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris, overall, we're direction, continue to move forward, look into the various topics that have been raised here, we asked the architect to look at plans that we received today, and we'll continue along in the process. Okay, so with that, I have to find out what agenda I want. Okay. We are at back, we're winding back to five point seven, we're moving. Oh, sorry, it's five point eight, we're moving. Okay, are there any changes for minutes? Okay, five seconds. All papers, five, ten minutes approved. Now we're back to six point one to five. Okay, oh, six point one five is, okay, for item six, which is approving the consent agenda, okay, so we reviewed the consent agenda, item six point one five is to approve the consent calendar, are there, is there a, is there any question on the consent calendar or topics on this? No, there's, all those in favor? The consent calendar is approved. We are at item seven point five, which is, we're on the world language update, which is a thing for our, remember, it's a so case to ground. Hey, Shelley?
Try not to take events with the immediate departure. I do, I do, and I thank you for being here. Good evening, it's a pleasure to give you an update on the Spanish immersion program and the implementation of that. We do have our world language committee, and I will tell you that it is an incredible group of individuals, as I said before, comprised of teachers, administrators, and parents throughout the district. At every step along the way, I do a little bit of work, or our committee does a little bit of work, and we bring that to the advisory committee, and they give us great input, and after their input, we have a much better product, and idea, ideas, and forms, and information have evolved, so it's moving along quite nicely. This last meeting just yesterday evening, the advisory committee reviewed and provided input regarding the press release, which will be available tomorrow, the application, the application parents will receive at parent information night, and then had a number of ideas and thoughts around staff and community outreach regarding the beginning of our immersion program for the twenty twenty-one school year. The information contained in the press release, as I said, it will go out tomorrow, it'll go out to the media, as well as all families in the district will receive the same information via Blackboard. We will also be sharing the information about our, how you can attend a parent night, and then complete an application for the Spanish immersion program. All of that information will be shared with local preschools, as well as our own ECDC and special education preschools, and we are also preparing an item to put on the Nextdoor app. At the, the press release also has information regarding enrollment eligibility, so it speaks to the age that a student has to be, not to, because every, to apply for the program, children have to be age eligible for kindergarten in the twenty twenty school year. That information is also contained in the the press release, and then it also has the dates for our parent information nights. You may notice that those dates have changed just a bit, the last one being, well, the first one, obviously, on February eleventh, the last one being April first, and we adjusted this timeline to accommodate for our kindergarten visitation week, which will be March twenty-third through March twenty-seven. That gives principals an opportunity to again, let parents know that we have a parent information night, you must attend a parent information night, that's where the applications will be handed out, and this gives parents an opportunity to attend, there's one final night that parents can come to after kindergarten visitation, in case of how they did not hear. So what does the process look like to participate in the application process? Parents have to attend that meeting, and their children have to be age eligible for kindergarten, and then they can complete an application. The applications will be accepted at the parent information night or here at the district office. We're trying to avoid a lot of hands on a single application, and trying to take individual school sites out of the receipt of those applications so that we can ensure we have them here at the district office and receive them on those evenings. So what does that timeline look like? Uh, the timeline, as I mentioned already, we have the parent information nights, there are four of them, the kindergarten visitations are March twenty-third through twenty-seven, April thirteenth begins registration for all incoming students, that includes kindergarten students. We will begin accepting the applications for the Spanish immersion program as early as February eleventh. Families still have to register their children at their home school for kindergarten, so it's a, there are two pieces, you have to register for kindergarten and complete an application expressing interest in the immersion program. All of the immersion applications are due by May first, and as well, even though we have, enrollment is open, to to be considered for the lottery, you must have enrolled your child for kindergarten by May first, because we have to be able to, we have to have numbers, and we have to to be able to load those classes and know the numbers of students that we're looking at. And then we will have our lottery on May fourth, and we will require that all parents confirm participation, I said last day to confirm participation, that will be on May sixteenth, that's a Friday. So parents, once they are notified that they have a spot, they were, they received a spot via a lottery, they will have to say, yes, we are interested and we want that spot. If we don't have verbal confirmation by May sixteenth, or they decline, then we go to the first student on our wait list. Right now, we are planning to open the immersion program at one school, but that is entirely dependent on enrollment. If we have seventy-five applicants for the Spanish immersion program, then we would open a second section, a second strand at another school. The two schools we've identified currently are Delmar Hills to start, and then Ashley Falls did a numbers warrant. We also, as part of our getting the information out, the teachers on our world language advisory committee really felt it was very important that all teachers throughout the district know about the program, and respond, at least know where to point parents if they get questions about it, and so all principals at the end of this month will also be providing some information about the world language program via a staff meeting, and teachers will be equipped to, like, during parent conferences, if somebody has a question, we'll have information that they could hand over and direct people back to the district office or to our website where they can get questions answered. Questions?
Just that question regarding if there are over seventy-five interested families, and then you have the two different strands, what's the benefit, or why are you considering having two sections on two different sites?
Because we're really, we're looking, one, at proximity, and we're also looking at what schools can accommodate. What we don't want to do is start a program that immediately displaces staff at a school. So proximity being that we would have a program that's in two different parts of our community, and then a program that will grow slowly over seven years at two different sites. And so, we, number one, and let's take Delmar Hills, for example, if we were to put two strands at that school, that would only leave space for one English class, you know, English-only classroom at that school. That school can't accommodate three strands across the board moving up, they don't have room to do that. Likewise, let's say if we applied that at Ashley Falls, the reason, they they don't have room to accommodate that currently, at least not until PHR is built out. And so we also are looking at schools, and the reason why those two schools are identified, Delmar Hills enrollment, over time, being kindergarten, has been very, very low, we do not believe, based on the numbers and the historical trends, putting an immersion program there one class will displace any resident children. If you want to go to Delmar Hills and you don't want to be in the immersion program, you will still be able to attend Delmar Hills. Ashley Falls has a very, very small footprint, and so we would look at that school because once PHR is built out, the potential for that population to get very, very small is also, you know, something we need to pay attention to. So we're looking at what makes sense right now, but also, over time, as we have a brand new school, Delmar Heights, in a shared boundary area, PHR is going to be another boundary, a brand new school that will draw students from the PHR area, making the, really trying to keep vibrant, lively school populations at all nine of our schools.
I've got questions. So will parents be able to say they prefer one school or another school so that they can go, say, I'd rather be at Delmar Hills, or I'd rather be at Ashley Falls, so if you do over the two strands, then you can place them, what do you want?
Yes and not initially. For example, if we have only, say, thirty-five people interested, we will move forward with a strand at Delmar Hills School. So that other option only kicks in if we have a huge number of applications. if we have a huge number of applications for our immersion program. If we do, then have, um, let's say we have a hundred applications, 7,500 applications. When we do the lottery and speak to the parents, we will ask them their preferences site.
Okay. And then I know you'll have attrition over the years and it'll fall down. So if you have both sites that have, that we've had attrition and they don't roll up, uh, I mean, would you combine those two in a four fit six? As if they roll up into one, at one school? Because say you only had half number of students now at each, it would make sense to combine them. But then, you know, where do we put them? I'm just asking logistics on that. Or would you be two really small classrooms at two different sites?
Well, we're hoping loading the classes at 25 will allow for that attrition. And we, we have planned and know that as these classes move up into the upper grades, they're, they're likely going to be smaller than what we could staff at, at 28. We haven't considered taking, uh, a classroom Delmar Hills and combining it with a class at Ashley Falls. But we would have, if those class sizes got so small, number one, we would have to look at our program and say, why? That's a problem. Um, but also really get together and look at enrollment and look at next steps. It would be a real challenge to tell parents who have been at a school and committed to a program for five years to say, now you have to go to another school site.
It seems like you've thought through so many elements of the program and it's great to, to see it all ticking off at this point. And I imagine once you see where the kids are, it's going to give you more information to inform, you know, the next thing that you do. We can't necessarily sit here and know, you know, where all the applications come from and where do people want to be. So, so, um, we'll find out soon. We will. We'll start to accept applications in a couple of weeks. So, um, I'm sure we'll be back. I think this is a regular item now, they just need to get regular updates as the program evolves. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um, we are at item eight point one, approval, adoption of board policy 1312 and one. Complaints concerning the district employee. Are there any questions about the policy? Is our motion to approve? Okay. All in paper? Hi. Do we have to wait for it? We have form? Yeah, you're right. And we have form? Do we want to, Doug and Catherine? Doug and Catherine, yeah? Yeah, then everybody? Is that, is that a view? Okay. Um, okay, item. So, I think, so I'm missing something. We heard item 12 point one? Did we do that?
Oh, did we? We didn't do it.
Oh, so I'm sorry, 11 point one. Okay, I have a question. I had it circled. Okay, 11 point one, board is most confusing agenda. Item 11 point one, board report proposed salary schedule for temporary substitute certificate. Are there any questions about that one? Okay, is our motion to approve? Okay, Doug? All those in paper? Hi. Okay, item 12 point one, board review, reminder of upcoming DMS DNS. On the screen. And 12 point two, reminder of upcoming district DNS and PTNS. 12 point three, preliminary items for the February 2020 regular board meeting. Item A, items for the regular meeting? Okay, item 12 point four is adjourned on the meeting. Does that motion to approve? Just have it. Do you want? All in paper? The meeting is closed? Good evening.
How are you?
Man, sir.
I'm good.
How's that boy doing?
He feels awesome.
He's five in sixth grade?
He's.